I'd like to call the June 16, 2020, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us. And if the staff could please start the introductory video. Good evening. I'd like to officially call the June 16, 2020, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we hold our county commission meeting this evening, we do so in the midst of not just the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, which has led to the death of more than 100,000 Americans, but also during a time of great unrest in our country. Millions of people have taken to the streets across the nation and thousands here in Buncombe County to demand change following the violent murder of George Floyd. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, for prayer, for peace, healing, and justice in our country and in our community, and for reflection on what each of us can do to change ourselves and to change our community for the better. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we have a few announcements. Actually, I'm going to read the ethics reminder for the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Sir, if I could have a point of privilege here. Tonight in the budget, we will be seeing where we'll have fire departments listed. And basically, the county is a collection agency for our fire departments across the county. That money comes to the county, then it's expended back to the fire departments as part of their overall budget submittal. When I first became on the commission, I approached the county manager, I approached the county attorney, and I've approached Ms. Hockaday. I've reached out to the school government so that everything is clear about where I stand as a member of one of those fire departments as it pertains to that money coming into the county. I have been informed, and I'd like for the attorneys tonight to reaffirm that, that there is not a conflict. I do not serve on a board of directors for my fire department. I don't set the budget. I don't vote for the budget. I am an employee of theirs. So I have nothing, but I just want to make sure that that is on record, that I have done the research, and I'd like for the attorneys to chime in if they will, please.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with that. I mean, there's no conflict of interest on his voting on this budget matter.
We're all on the same page. Okay. Commissioner Penland, I appreciate you disclosing that, and I think we all share the opinion that your voting on the budget is permissible and, in fact, required as part of our county commission policies, and there's no conflict of interest there. All right. And so since there are no conflicts of interest, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the board at this meeting tonight. Commissioners, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
Chairman, I just have a comment that I want to make for the public. I want to make sure that they choose to take an opportunity to review and look in the consent agenda. There are some projects for the Asheville City and Buncombe County schools, capital projects that are funded through sales tax collection and some great projects there across both systems. So I just want to direct them to that and so that they would be able to see that.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda into?
A second.
A second.
Okay. And also, this is to follow the remainder of the agenda?
Yes.
As published? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Let me just say a couple of words about public comment at the outset of our meeting. As folks are probably aware, we've been, we've not been holding in-person public comment for the last several meetings due to the COVID-19 issue and concerns. At the meeting last held, there was a decision that we would take in-person public comment on the budget. And Ms. Penner, do you have an update for us?
Yes, sir. There are several people in the lobby and downstairs that are wanting to speak on the monument item, so if you want to adjust your time to allow that.
Well, I think we're only going to take in-person comment on the budget. Are there people here who want to comment on the budget that we know of?
Yes, we do have in-person people here to speak on the budget as well, but I'm saying there's tons of people in the overfloor room that are listening, so I just want to make sure you knew that.
Okay, thank you. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to take in-person public comment for the budget. On the agenda item related to monuments, we are going to take an hour, we're going to provide an hour for public comment. We've received a large number of written comments and voicemails that citizens have left. And so at our pre-meeting prior to this, we discussed, if we read them all, it would take about six hours is the estimate. So we're going to provide one hour to review written comments and voicemails that residents have left us commenting on that item. So when we get to that item, we will, we will have that, we will share those, right? So I think that's the plan for public comment on that, on that topic. One thing we didn't discuss at our pre-meeting is if there are any, because we have been at the last several meetings reading any other comments that have been shared with us. So I guess if there's any other comments that have been submitted unrelated to the budget and unrelated to the monuments issue, we'll also read those or listen to those at that time. If there's a very large volume, we might need to consider putting some time limit on it, but if it's not that many, we'll just go through all of them. All right, so that's our plan for public comment at the meeting tonight. Okay, the next item on the agenda is under good news, and this is related to the Governor's Award for Volunteer Service. And Lynn Smith is going to get us started on this item. And before she does, I want to say for all the staff who are here, when you've completed the, your role in the meeting tonight in terms of agenda items, you're welcome to, you're welcome to leave after, after that. So thank you for being here. Hi, Lynn.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Lynn Smith. I'm your Buncombe County Coordinator for the Governor's Volunteer Service Award. In October 2019, the Governor's Office contacted us in need of a local coordinator for the Governor's Volunteer Service Award. In prior years, Buncombe County had not participated in these programs. This was a pretty big honor. We put the word out to the community that we were seeking nominations within our county. We established an internal committee, solicited nominations from the community, and we received 13 applications. All of the nominations are submitted through the Governor's Office and then rerouted to us. We had to choose 10 recommendations for the Volunteer Service Award, one nominee for the Governor's Medallion Award, and one nominee for the Pay Director of Volunteers Award. And we just wanted to acknowledge the 10 recipients for the Governor's Volunteer Service Award.
Great, great. So I'll, I'm going to just share a little bit of information about, about these, these great folks who were recipients of the 2020 Governor's Volunteer Service Award from our county. Barbara Johnson demonstrates outstanding service and commitment in Land of Sky Senior Champions, advocating for seniors, helping older adults to age and place in their homes, has dedicated 20-plus years of service in volunteering. Adair Andrew demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to offering services at Manah Food Bank, providing rural outreach support specifically to prison outreach programs. Noel Schwartz, Creative Peacemakers, demonstrates outstanding service and commitment at Creative Peacemakers, mentoring and educating our youth and community. Ken and Marge Loken demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to volunteering at Manah Food Bank, dedicated 20-plus years to volunteering in the community. Veronica Coit demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to volunteering with Asheville Humane Society, Buncombe County Animal Shelter. Robin Martin demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to volunteering with Warrior Canine Connection, MD Healing Headquarters, working with Veterans Treatment Court, outstanding commitment to helping our veterans. Mike Mulry demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to Manah Food Bank and serving those in the community. Gary Schwartz demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to the American Red Cross and offering team support to fire departments and the Asheville Housing Authority. Tiffany Ahnacho demonstrates outstanding service and commitment to volunteering through her sorority, Delta Sigma Theta, and within the community. Judy Harvard, National Service Member, AmeriCorps, Vista, Senior Corps, has dedicated more than 20 years to volunteering in our community. So let's give a round of applause to all these great people in our community. Thank you, Lynn. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an update, an annual report from the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority, and Lou Blieweis, the executive director, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you. Have an update. We have a PowerPoint. There we go. Do I control the page changer, or do you do that, Lamar? Great. Thank you. I appreciate you all providing me the time to do my annual update with you all tonight. So at the Asheville Regional Airport, well, maybe. Next slide. Thank you. We just have a brief overview of where we are. Unfortunately, because of the circumstances and time, we will be doing a COVID update also, since that's a lot of questions of what's going on. Next slide, please. So this is our basic airlines and route map. Next slide, please. So before COVID, we had basically six airlines serving the airport, serving 21 destinations all the way from up northeast that Boston was going to start this spring, but basically Newark, all the way down to the East Coast, as far west as Denver, and some new flights that were starting this year being Austin and Houston. Dallas we had last year. Next slide, please. 2019 represented a phenomenal year in growth for us. We had five, or more than five consecutive years, but in 19, we had 43% increase in our passenger service, jumping us up to 1.6 million. It's remarkable to us in the fact that in 2018, we celebrated 1 million passengers going through our terminal. In 2019, we're up 1.6 million, and we were scheduled and hoping to hit 2 million passengers within two years of hitting that 1 million mark. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights from calendar year 2019. Again, we kicked off our milestone of 1 million passengers in early 2019. We welcomed seven new routes. Allegiant had Palm Beach and Sarasota, Florida. American introduced Dallas, Fort Worth, LaGuardia, and Philadelphia. Delta introduced Detroit, and United introduced Washington Dulles Airport. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights again, we've introduced new passenger services. TSA PreCheck, that's obviously where you don't have to divest yourself of everything. You can go through the PreCheck. And we introduced anti-ants and Cinnabon. And if you hadn't traveled and you didn't smell the cinnamon, then you have to have your nose checked, because the airport smells of cinnamon all the time. Next slide, please. We had some highlights as far as receiving $10 million in federal grants from the FAA. We had the privilege of having Secretary Chow come down from Washington DC to present a check to the North Carolina airports, a total of $14.8 million. Out of that $14.8, Asheville received 10 million of that. We began, with that money, we began our terminal modernization program and kicked off Phase One, which basically is doing the design for what a new terminal building will look like. Next slide, please. Infrastructure enhancements, because we were running out of parking, we contracted and started construction of some shuttle service parking lots across the street from the airport. We're working on our airfield and a new aircraft apron. That's the picture that you see there is the aircraft apron, what was ground for what will become the airport apron. And we increased and upgraded our security access control system throughout the terminal building. Next slide. Many Community Connections, Wings for Autism is always our great program that we have each year. It's one of my highlights each year to see all the, you know, the kids coming in that are getting acclimated to traveling. We held Blue Ridge Honor Flights. We work with Manah Food Bank, Partnership for Substance for Youth, and we do a lot of quite a bit of work with United Way. Next slide. At the end of fiscal year 2019 for us, the airport had $154.8 million of assets. That's an increase of $16.4 million from the previous year and an increase of $25.9 million from 2017. This is a breakdown of our major revenue sources, parking being our largest, going to airlines, rental cars, fixed base operator and general aviation concessionaires, all the way down to the federal government. I will say right now that the airlines being our second-largest revenue source, but it's a revenue source that brings us absolutely no net revenue to the airport. We try and operate on a zero base for the airlines. We want them to operate here at the airport, so if we can provide services that they're just covering their own costs, that's our goal. Next slide, please. Now we're looking at where we are with COVID-19 and what's going on. Next slide. So the airport was impacted. Air service nearly ceased for about eight weeks. It's almost 12 now. We are seeing slight passenger upticks since Memorial Day. Things have been climbing upward. And the predictive recovery for us in the aviation and the airport industry is roughly four years. We're hoping that Asheville will do better than what the industry averages. Back in 2008, after the economy tanked all across this country, our airport came back in our community within eight months, where most airports came back within three years. We've got a good community that likes to travel, so we're hoping that we see those uptick in travel trends here sooner rather than later. Next slide, please. Financially, we're doing well to weather the storm of COVID. We reached our 2020 budget year, or yeah, revenues in the end of February. So basically, we made our numbers in February. Everything else from February to the end of June was going to be an additional net increase for us, going to capital projects, but we'll probably even out on a break-even year this year. We do carry six months operating revenue or operating expenses on hand, so we can cover ourselves for six months without any issues. And then out of the industry, the airport industry was fortunate enough to get $10 billion out of the CARES Act. Our share of that $10 billion was 14.4 million, which is about 14 months of operating revenues for us. Part of that requirement was twofold. One was maintaining employees through the end of the calendar year this year, so we had to maintain 90%, which is not an issue. We don't plan on having any layoffs or furloughs. And the other one is, the second primary was be able to deal with debt service. Most of the airports have large debt services because of capital infrastructure programs, and the rest can go to whatever the FAA says is legal, as far as what we can do with our money in the eyes of the FAA. So that will carry us out for a while. We are putting some of that CARES Act money to complete our runway project and continue some work on our terminal building. Next slide, please. We've introduced ABL Travel Smart. That's our program to educate the community and make our passengers feel safe as they're traveling through the terminal building. One of the things that, again, we are working with crisis response to all this, we're being conservative in our financial management, we're maintaining employment, and focusing on operational changes, and our main primaries for air service recovery. Next slide, please. So as of our June, this month's schedule, we were limited flights to 18 destinations, averaging about 11 flights per day, which is down from about 30 a day that we normally would see. The list is here, as you see before you. Boston was a new city that was announced early this year, and it was pushed off until September. So Allegiant still plans to introduce it. They did introduce at the end of May, they introduced Austin, Houston, and Chicago Midway. So from 21 destinations down to roughly 18, and again, 30 to 35 average flights a day down to the 11 roughly, so that we're seeing. I will say that come July, the airlines are reinstating more flights. As an example, right now, for the past two months, we've had one Delta flight a day to Atlanta. Starting July 1, they're going to four flights a day. And Americans making institutional changes too, increasing their flights along with the other carriers. Next slide, please. Western North Carolina has proven its viability as far as a profitable market for the airlines. We've shown that we've had a proven track record. It's a positive indicator. Airlines know that we have a community of air travelers, and we are a desirable destination bringing those travelers to us. And we're heightening our focus on supporting the airline's success to, as they start their return back to us, and hopefully that will be in favor of our region. Next slide, please. So some of the things that we're forging ahead with long-term strategies, it's not just about what airlines have done in the past, it's what they're going to look like in the future. A lot of the airlines have already announced they're going to be, you know, more lean and be very selective on where they start flying again, not just put the same traffic back into the same markets that they had. In this term right now, there are quite a few airports that have lost service altogether or lost major carriers, and the news is that they're probably not going to get them back. Fortunately for us, again, we have a strong air service market, and we have had none of those indications, with the exception of Spirit, who provided non-stop service to Orlando. They have pulled out of our market with the competition. It just was not profitable for them to serve us, so they have no intentions of coming back anytime soon, unfortunately for us. Next slide, please. With our airfield redevelopment project still continues, we're in our final phase. We're currently paving right now, and we hope to have the new runway completed by this coming December. Although we've run into some contractor issues over the past couple of years, things are on pace to finish this year. Next slide, please. We're currently working with the city and the county for utility enhancements on Terminal Drive. This is the first step to improve and increase our terminal building. We are still using a 60-year-old infrastructure system of water lines and sewer lines. That project is just about complete, but we ran all new water lines and sewer lines in front of the terminal building. The one positive thing about what's going on right now with COVID is we were going to have to disrupt traffic and make it inconvenient for our passengers while we tore up the front roadway. With the lack of passengers because of COVID, that's been easy to get the project done without too much inconvenience. Next slide, please. Parking enhancements, I mentioned across the street. We're putting in a new remote lot. This is just some pictures of the construction going on across Airport Road from the airport terminal. Next slide. And terminal expansion design. So the terminal that we are currently utilizing is undersized by roughly half. We should be, we're currently at about 113,000 square feet. We have seven gates with five loading bridges. We should be operating in excess of 225,000 square feet with 12 loading, or 12 gates and 12 loading bridges. It does give us, right now, we're not sure what traffic is going to come back, and again, we're looking at three to four years, but it puts us ahead of the eight ball rather than behind, so it gives us an opportunity. We are moving forward with the design. We'll see how the economy is recovering and air traffic is recovering before we go out for bid on construction itself, but we're hoping that with the less travelers, we'll be able to construct, get a new terminal building in place, minimizing inconvenience to our travelers, and then by the time our loads come back to where they were in 2018, 2019, we'll be ready to go. We'll see what happens. This is just a quick rendering of what the 12 gates may look like. We're planning on moving, obviously, the checkpoint downstairs right now, checkpoint. We are, actually, our whole terminal is on a first story right now. We're going to flip that and go back to a second-story terminal building. Checkpoint will be moved upstairs, along with all of the gates, with only the bag claim and the ticket counters being on the first level. So we're going back to a modern type of technology, which is not really what we want, because we have an aging population in our community that likes the lower level of boarding and deboarding, but from a, from a operational standpoint, going back to a second story works best for, for everybody. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you all may have.
All right, Lou, thank you so much for that great update. I know it's, we're all in unusual times, and the airline industry is maybe the epicenter of that, right? So we appreciate the update, and Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would you go over the, the reason behind the golf course purchase that was recently in the news?
Sure.
What happened to the golf course?
The golf course is in bankruptcy. They approached us with an opportunity to purchase the golf course and for us to protect the land around the airport. We're dealing with an issue right now in Henderson County with a large subdivision being proposed on property on the south side of the golf course. That could be an impediment to the airport. So protect, to protect our airport interests and to look at further maximizing our non-aeronautical revenues to support the airport, it was an opportunity for us to look at purchasing the golf course, and we're moving forward with that. It was just approved in the bankruptcy court hearings yesterday. It is before Henderson County tomorrow in their commissioners' meeting, not so much for the approval of the purchase of the golf course, but more of, once we buy it, since we are a tax-exempt entity, that it would come off Henderson County tax rolls. That's what they're approving.
I bet they're thrilled about that.
And so we're working with Henderson County on that. And right now, we do not know. We're doing our due diligence. The close is set for the end of July. We have 60-day period to look at environmental survey and all kinds of acquisition issues. So we don't know at this present time what we will be doing with the golf course, but we're open to suggestions, and we're looking at every possibility of, again, maximizing our revenues and protecting the airport long-term.
So how have the rates been affected? Just a curious question.
Rates as in airfares?
Can you get a cheap ticket?
You know, it varies. I'm hearing people that are getting great airfares, but I'm also hearing and seeing the opposite, too. One of the issues is for the airlines to remain profitable, which obviously no one is right now, you can't keep half the airplane empty, or you can't provide social distancing. So a couple of things we're going to have to give. Either the communities are going to have to be accepting of filling the seats on the airplane, or if the airlines are going to continue to keep half the airplane empty, they're going to have to raise the fares to be able to make those, you know, those profits of lost seats. We don't know where it's going right now. I think a big part of it is how soon and when do we come up with a vaccine for COVID to make people feel more comfortable being on an airplane. I will state that the air circulation on an airplane is very good. It's quality of being like in a hospital, if not better. It's, you know, the air, it goes to HEPA filters. It's constantly changing out with fresh outside air, so it is fairly more safe than a regular, you know, HVAC systems in a, in a building. So again, but when you're sitting three inches next to your seatmate... So again, but when you're sitting three inches next to your seatmate, anything can happen.
Sure. Thanks for that.
All right, Lou, thank you so much. We appreciate what you and your team are doing. And thanks for the update. Okay. Next item is a public hearing on economic development projects. Rachel Nygaard and Timothy, is Tim here?
Yeah, he is.
Okay, right, you can see him from here. All right, and Timothy Love will help us out on this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rachel Nygaard. I'm your Strategic Partnerships Director. Not typically the person who comes up and speaks to you about economic development. That's Tim Love, who directs intergovernmental relations. However, some of the items up for appropriation related to economic development are coming from our grants. So I'll kick us off and then hand off to Tim to finish up prior to the hearing. So this is separate from the regular overall public hearing on the budget. It's specific to appropriations for economic development. This is a requirement that we hold this. It was prepared by the, the notice was prepared by the county attorney and with the clerk to the board, shared with the community so they could have an opportunity to weigh in on these appropriations, which include both new and some renewal or existing appropriations. The first four economic development appropriations that are proposed for two thousand twenty-one fiscal year are in your packet, and they are coming from, as recommendations out of the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee. I'll read the names of those four. They are the Asheville Grown Business Alliance, which is being recommended for a grant of fifteen thousand dollars for the Go Local movement. Carolina Small Business Development Fund, which is being recommended for a grant of thirty-five thousand dollars for the Western Women's Business Center. Eagle Market Streets Development Corporation, which is being recommended for a grant of twenty-two thousand five hundred for individual development accounts and small business support. And finally, the fourth is Mountain Biz Works, which is being recommended for a grant of fifty thousand dollars to create an Opportunity Entrepreneur and Residence Program. These are four out of a total thirty-four recommended strategic partnership grants, which you received when the county manager presented the proposed budget. They're in the budget document in Appendix A, which starts on page forty-three, along with grant recommendations from the other grant committees that the county has. This hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, if approved, would be established in contracts like those other grants would. And the process would be to include metrics so that the recipient organizations, the grantees, would track economic impact, things like jobs created and jobs saved. And then that would be reported back to the board and to the public. I guess I should ask any questions about those before I pass to Tim. Thank you.
Good evening. Our next section, we have two tables. The first table relates to our economic development partners. And so these dollars are included in your budget and is something that you would approve in the current year budget. The two partners that I'm speaking of, the first is the Sports Commission, and the second is the Economic Development Coalition. The Sports Commission, in previous years, had been funded at forty-five thousand dollars annually. In the current budget, that amount remains flat, and the purpose is to support sports tourism in our region. Next up is the Economic Development Coalition. That amount also flat at four hundred thousand dollars. Purpose here is primarily recruitment of new businesses and industries to Buncombe County. Those amounts, as I said, would be included in your budget and if approved, would sort of be, quote unquote, new money. In the next table, we have appropriations and expected expenditures for previously approved economic development agreements. That's a mouthful, and the reason we said it that way is these are basically economic development incentives with specific companies that have already been approved by a Buncombe County Board of Commissioners Board during a public hearing. So these items have already been voted on at some point. They're all supported by contracts or economic development agreements. So there is no requirement for you to take any type of action. There is a requirement in statute, though, that we have a hearing to sort of announce these appropriations, even though they've already been voted on and approved in a prior meeting. So we'll take the moment to read these into the record. The first is General Electric Company and Unison Engine Components, so GE. That's four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the creation and maintenance of one hundred and eighty-three new jobs and capital investment of two hundred and thirty million dollars by two thousand twenty-one. As a quick note, there's two agreements that support that total amount as well as the jobs. Next up is Ingalls Market for approximately one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the creation and maintenance of one hundred and sixty new jobs and capital investment of eighty-five million dollars by two thousand twenty-one. Quick note on this, this refers to the distribution facilities. This is not for creation of jobs related to Ingalls Retail Establishments, which under our policy is prohibited. Next up is Lynnamar, North Carolina, for one million dollars for the creation and maintenance of eight hundred new jobs and capital investment by three hundred and fifteen million dollars by the year two thousand twenty-four. As a reminder, this is the requirement under the new agreement that was renegotiated and consolidated into a single agreement. And we'll be able to share an update on how they're doing soon. Next up is New Belgium Brewing. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the creation and maintenance of one hundred and fifty-four new jobs and capital investment of one hundred and seventy-five million by the year two thousand twenty-eight. Quick note here, as many of you are aware, New Belgium was purchased by a new entity. But based on the structure of our agreements, that does sort of transfer to the new owner. They are still required to maintain the same job and capital investment targets. As I said earlier, those economic development incentive agreements have already been approved in a prior public hearing, so there is no requirement to vote, but I am required to sort of announce those in the public hearing. The two economic development partners, that is included in your budget, and that is something that you would vote on as you approve the potential budget. Are there any questions?
Don't see any right now. Procedurally, what do we need to do? Do we need to do anything? We need to open a public hearing, although we're not going to take public comment. Just open it, and then I'm going to ask, were there any public comments submitted? You'll give me an answer, and then we'll read them if there were. Okay.
And this is part of the budget conversation, so anyone that wants to speak can speak to this part.
All right, that sounds fine.
So Mr. Love, before you get off there, you may have said it. I just wanted to make sure that people know that they, these incentives have to hit a certain, have to hit certain job requirements or investment requirements before any of this is paid out.
Absolutely, and thank you for letting me not forget that. Every one of our economic development agreements has milestones built in on an annual basis, and incentives are only paid out after the fact. So if your annual target was a hundred jobs and two hundred million dollars in investment, you must deliver that documentation to our office. It's supported by reports sent to the state as well as to our tax department. And at that point, if you've met your targets, you'd be eligible for an incentive. If you have not, you would either receive, depending on the terms of the contract, a prorated payment or no payment at all.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, I have a question before you leave. Will any of these be affected when I look out at the dates, like twenty-one for several? Will the COVID affect them being able to pull it off? Because I've seen one on here. The industry has been wrecked, you know, because of what's going on now with the airline industry.
Absolutely.
Do we know where we are at this point?
For sure, and we'll say that. So it's a case-by-case basis, and so some industries are more COVID-proof than others. Airline industry, as Mr. Blighwell indicated, is severely impacted. In the case of GE, and there's been some news media about this as well. So we know that worldwide GE has had to reduce the number of jobs worldwide. We expect that there may be additional cuts as we proceed. Those cuts don't necessarily translate directly to our Asheville plant, but in some cases they do. And so we will see some local reductions. What I would say is, knowing the total workforce of our Sweeten Creek operations, in many ways, they had exceeded their jobs targets substantially. So they were, you know, whereas they're supposed to be at approximately five hundred jobs, they're closer to seven hundred or something of that nature. So as they do look at cuts, they're still maintaining their commitments to us at this point in time. But there's no doubt there's an impact, and it's not a positive one. And so I don't want to spin it as such.
Thanks.
Absolutely. But it is case-by-case. Other industries, you know, none listed on that document, but, you know, in particular, our healthcare companies. You know, a great example would be Nipro, who came before this board earlier in the year. They're seeing sort of an uptick. Also, industries that deal with PPE. So a great example of that would be National Wiper Lines, who produces sanitary wipes. They've grown by a hundred jobs over the course of the pandemic. So it does depend, but there's no doubt some negative impacts.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Tim. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for these economic development projects at six PM. Are there any public comments that have been submitted for any of these projects? Okay. Are there any members of the public who are here this evening? This is part of our budget. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this? And I understand there might be some people in overflow areas. Is there, how will we know if any of them want to comment?
Staff is actually asking that question, and the ones that were outside were not commenting on the budget at this point.
Okay. All right, so we don't think there are. All right, well, then I'm going to close the public hearing at six oh one for the economic development projects. And we don't need to take any action on this. We just needed to hold the hearing. All right. Next up is the public hearing on the FY two thousand twenty-one recommended budget. I'm going to turn it over to Avril Pender, our county manager, to get us started on this item.
Thanks, Max. Thank you, commissioners. As you mentioned, this is a scheduled public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-one recommended budget. The details of the recommended budget was presented to you on June second, and I'll just give a brief recap as we go into the public hearing. Next slide. The total recommended general fund budget is three hundred and thirty-five million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. The budget is balanced with a tax rate of fifty-two point nine cents, which we have kept flat for the last two fiscal years. Next slide. With the impact of COVID, we anticipated our revenues to be down. However, not all of our revenue sources will be down. This chart shows the unrestricted revenue growth. As you may recall, for the last two fiscal years, we have used the unrestricted growth as a guide to establish a rate of increase to funding our allocation for our education system. The unrestricted growth rate, following adjustments for the impact of COVID, is one point zero eight percent. The budgeted revenues for fiscal year twenty-one recommended budgets are three hundred and twenty-four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. We found appropriated fund balance of eleven million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars for a total general fund budget of three hundred and thirty-five million, six forty-eight, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Next, okay. When you look at the total fiscal year twenty-one recommended revenue budget, both restricted and unrestricted revenues, we expect an overall decrease of point one one percent. That's in comparison to fiscal year twenty's amended budget. As mentioned, a recommended appropriation of eleven million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in appropriated fund balance, that maintains our fund balance policy slightly above the fifteen percent minimum goal at sixteen point six percent. And this also keeps our tax rate flat at fifty-two point nine cents. On the expenditure side, the general fund budget is adopted at the functional level. The budget is in balance, so therefore, the expenditures are also recommended at three hundred and thirty-five million, six hundred and forty-eight, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Education, human services, and public safety. I'm sorry, Max, I looked up, but I didn't mean she didn't go yet. Sorry. Education, human services, and public safety are the top three functional areas. That comprises two hundred and forty-six point two million dollars of the total general fund, three hundred and thirty-five million. When you compare, when you compare our budgets, you can see that we're recommending three point eight million dollars less as compared to fiscal year twenty, or one point one percent lower overall for the general fund budget. The largest component of the general fund is funding for education. There's approximately sixty-eight point nine seven million allocated for Buncombe County schools, twelve point five nine allocated for Asheville City Schools. That totals eighty-one point five six million, and there's seven point one for AB Tech. This equates to our recommended growth rate for our K-12 system of one point one percent and a flat amount for AB Tech for their fiscal year twenty, from their fiscal year twenty amended budget. We saw in the earlier slide that the county anticipated unrestricted revenue growth is one point zero eight percent. So one point one is in line with that recommended growth from the unrestricted revenues. Next slide. In North Carolina, the general statutes assign specific responsibilities to counties in regards to education funding. The county fulfills these recommendations, these responsibilities through sales tax revenue and the use of the capital schools fund, that funding committee to prioritize capital projects. For fiscal year twenty-one, the debt service on facilities is budgeted at twenty-two point four million, and the sales tax share for ADM, that per pupil allocation, is estimated at fourteen point four six million. And then we just talked about the general fund appropriation, or actual general fund dollars, of eighty-one point six, eighty-one point five six million dollars. When you total all of that, the county's investment in our K-12 school system is one hundred and eighteen point four six million dollars. Next slide. Also in the recommended budget, we're asking for eleven general fund positions, ten in emergency services and one in public health, one grant-funded position, and five positions in solid waste. The recommended capital needs includes six point three million to be financed with debt proceeds and three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in pay-as-you-go projects. This is for Greenway commitments, information technology upgrades that would improve our cybersecurity platform. Since the time of the recommended budget presentation on June second, we received a quote for the Leicester Cross and Build Out at one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. As you may recall, this will come from previous debt issuance. And if you support that, you will see that amount reflected at the adoption in the capital project ordinance. Additionally, we receive information from the NPO of a funding commitment of eight hundred thousand dollars for the Woodfin Greenway. If you recall, we cut that from the general fund because we anticipated funding. That funding has been realized in an amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. You would also see that in your capital project ordinance at budget adoption. Next slide. Included in the recommended budget, in your budget in brief document that Rachel just mentioned, is a listing of all the awardees that are recommended for funding through the various community, for various committee, I'm sorry, community investments. Our investments in these community investments is five point one million dollars in total. Those partnerships help us to deliver quality services to our citizens. Throughout the deliberations between the committees, Early Childhood and Isaac Coleman, they are recommending multi-year periods for funding for some of the projects, and they'll be reviewed each year, and that'll be based on performance and budget availability. The total funding remained flat for Isaac Coleman and Tipping Point Grants from prior year. We reallocated one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars from various line items to the Strategic Partnership Grant so it can go through a competitive process, and it won't be automatic entitlements, but a competitive process. And Early Childhood received a two percent increase, or seventy-two thousand dollars, that that was required as part of the resolution that created that funding source. Next slide. The Ebro Hominy Fire Department, they are requesting a tax increase from fourteen point five cents to sixteen point five cents. This two cents equates to ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for that district. You also provide the final approval for the Asheville City Schools supplemental tax rate. As part of their budget request that they submitted, they're requesting that to remain flat at twelve cents. Next slide. Next slide. The public has been invited to share input through email, by phone, or in person for today's public hearing. So our next steps will be to hold the public hearing, as well as address any needed changes to the budget. Budget adoption would follow once you have been satisfied all of those changes and requirements. One more slide. Next slide. As part of the budget adoption, there are two ordinance that you must review. The first will be the annual budget funds, which is your general funds, your TDA funds. Included in that, you will adopt the fee schedule that we talked about earlier tonight, as well as the position classification and pay plan. And then the capital projects plan that we also discussed a few minutes ago. Next slide is the last slide. And this is the reference documents that's available online, that anyone can get additional information should they so choose. Now, Commissioners, ask that you do the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Pender. Are we ready to take public comment and open the hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Going to open the public hearing on the FY 2021 budget at 6:05 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed budget? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Or you'll be next, coming up. Thanks for being here. And just please let us know your name, and thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
Jean Freeman, Superintendent of Asheville City Schools. Chairman Newman and Commissioners, thank you for giving us this time to give some more information on some hard decisions that you're having to make. Before you, you have a recap of our budget request that Dr. Short did such a good job on. And I'm not going to repeat that because you have so many other things to listen to and decisions to make. I will say the one thing that has changed since that meeting a month ago, and it has changed pretty dramatically, is that the opening of school is not going to be a traditional setting anymore. It is going to be a hybrid or virtual response to COVID. And even though we're getting CARES money of around $800,000, if we have to go an entire year under this new scenario, cost in terms of transportation, which we do get some reimbursement for, but we're questioning, will we get reimbursement if we're having to make eight runs instead of two? Reimbursement for other things such as our food program, which we're serving thousands of meals each month now, and how that will work if we have to do three or four different types of meal service to kids. And the biggest thing, I think, for us is that we are going to have to have some sort of outreach with our counselors and our other staff members if students are going to be attending school from a virtual setting. I think during the spring, we were just trying to do the best that we could in terms of response to this new threat to our health. But I think that the expectations from both the community and from parents and from ourselves are going to be very different for this school year going forward. So I'd just like for you to consider that as you make these hard decisions. And with that, I'd like to say thank you for all that you do for us. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to tell you a story. On March the 13th, our worlds changed. And in two days, Buncombe County Schools had efficiently put virtual learning and devices into the hands of 23,295 Buncombe County School students. We continue to accept our responsibility to our community by serving over 1.4 million meals to Buncombe County School students. You're Buncombe County Commissioners. You have a responsibility to Buncombe County people. We came to you and requested funding for our essential locally paid employees. You allotted half that amount. These are not pleasant times, and they're sure not fair. But it's in these times that we find out who we are. We can make a choice. You can allow the circumstances to define you, or you can decide you are much more than these circumstances and accept your responsibility to fully fund our request. I urge you to accept this responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yep. You can come over to the podium. And yeah, thanks for being here. And we realize it's a little bit different than usual, but I appreciate you being here, and thanks for taking time to comment on the budget.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. My name is Jacob Blair. I live up in the Irwin area, lived here about a year, originally from McDowell County. I just wanted to come up to talk about the budget because it seems, I was looking it over, and it seems to me that it looks like you're cutting some funding from the Health Department. We're in a pandemic. I don't understand why you would cut funding for for a Health Department when we're dealing with a pandemic that has crippled our industries, hurt our businesses. It seems wildly irresponsible to the lives and livelihoods alone, while also increasing budgets. No offense to the sheriff and our badge holders here, but it seems tone deaf to increase budget for the sheriff's office while decreasing budget for a Health Department, when you've got all these other issues at hand. And now, I'm sorry, but I just don't understand it, and I was hoping I could get some clarity on that. If not right now, that's fine, but I'd prefer it.
Okay. And Mr. Blair, thank you for taking time to comment to us. We're not going to respond to individual questions. This is kind of our time to just listen to the public, but we appreciate your questions and your concerns, and I hope they can be addressed, but we're not going to respond.
That's fine. That's fine. In that case, just please, I would highly recommend, instead of whatever funding you are currently allotting to the sheriff's office, frankly, that is money that is much more well-spent, spending on COVID testing, increasing PPE supplies. There's plenty of much more responsible ways to spend county money to address these, the public health crisis that we're all currently in. Yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. All right. Who's next?
Hello. My name is Pearl Foster. I am a Buncombe County native and a current Buncombe County resident. First things first, you must eat meat all demands of all black leaders. Manheimer must resign. David Zach must resign. You must begin with defunding the sheriff's office. For example, the $1 million requested for new sheriff's vehicles at almost $42,000 apiece. You must radically change the spending habits at our jail now. Personally, as a Buncombe County native, I firmly believe that we should move forward towards abolishment. There is no reforming the blatant deep corruption. You can easily research how other cities are currently doing this. Please do. Moving forward, in spite of your best efforts to silence we the people, I am here this afternoon to demand the defunding of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office budget by at minimum 50%. Those dollars could do so much good in our community, instead of perpetuating abuses against our citizens. The spending situation at our jail must also radically change now. We all know all of the horror stories. Yes, even the ones during a global pandemic. I am here today to beg you to change the way that things are operating in our county. Both y'all's actions and inactions in our community's dire time of need are inexcusable and unforgivable. And to clarify, no, I don't just mean the past week. I also mean your inactions pertaining to the response to COVID-19. Are y'all not ashamed? Actions speak louder than words. I have known that city leadership was detached from their constituents for a while, but this is just so far beyond that. I demand you stop giving everything to hoteliers, breweries, and tourists over our own people. I demand that you stop allowing your fellow leaders to line their pockets while gleefully destroying my hometown. And simply, if you will not stop and help we the people, you must resign. Just as Esther Manheimer and David Zach must resign, we've seen enough. As Anita Hill said, certainly in a democracy, the people are more powerful than the people in charge. And I guess, thanks for letting us speak in a pandemic.
All right. Thanks so much. I'd ask that people not cheer or boo or in any way respond to people who are commenting. We want to have everyone have a chance to speak to us. And so thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Ruth O'Donnell, I'm from Weaverville, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I want to speak in favor of the portion of budget that supports our public libraries, excuse me, system. I am a member of the library board and grateful for the opportunity to do that. I also would like, if I am permitted, to make a comment concerning another agenda item, which is with budget related. Is that okay?
If it's related to the budget, but we're just commenting, we're just asking for public comment on the budget at this time.
I understand. This is related to the 2020 budget, not the 2021. It's the budget item, the amendment that's on your agenda. And I would like to support and express the support of other board members for that amendment, particularly for the portion of money that will be used for a library's facilities need study. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Brownie, Commissioners, my name is Tim Flora, and I reside at 6 Griffin Boulevard in Asheville. And also thanks to you, 508 Key Street, Knightdale, in Wake County. For full disclosure, I am a former finance director of this very fine organization, forced to resign by this governing body in 2018. Tonight, I would like to address two budget items in the FY 21 budget to illustrate that this board continues to be out of touch, not interested in accountability, and for some, there is still a sense of entitlement for special interest. I would like to highlight two budget programs, internal audit at $343,000 and sustainability at $491,000. Considering the past three years, I am amazed funding for light bulbs continues to be more important than building and maintaining a solid financial and internal controls infrastructure. Let's face it, you don't want internal audit sufficiently funded. You only want to give it lip service, to check a box, so to speak, and as it stifles your special interest. Let me illustrate with a story. In December 2016, Brownie became chairman. Congratulations. Shortly thereafter, while I was chasing Wanda Green down the stairwell, as I often did to get an approval, she said something to this effect, "I don't have time for you right now. I have to figure out how to make the chair happy, or he's going to fire me over this horse thing." Horses. Hmm. That didn't mean a thing to me then, but I remember it because it was so unusual. Interestingly, though, only weeks later, in March 2017, the Office of Sustainability was created. It was the chair's recommendation. As well, as we all know, energy sustainability is Brownie's thing, his special interest. By the way, Ellen Frost seconded that motion. I bet that event made the county chair happy. Someone who wasn't happy? Me. Why? Because they took one of my finance positions to staff this new office. That finance position, by the way, was a coveted resource, and the one I was using to revamp county financial policies. So what point am I trying to make? If Wanda's comments were true, I'd take them as such, as they fit the pattern. And the chair knew of the wrongdoing then. Did he leverage that into funding for his special interest instead of reporting it? That's concerning, but it also fits a pattern. Through hook or crook seems to be the Buncombe way. The drive for special interest or pork spending has got to stop. Whether it's horses, or sustainability, or whatever, and you know what it is, please stop. Stop putting your interests before the people and the organization you serve. My budget recommendation for internal audit and sustainability is this. Invest all the sustainability budget into the internal audit function. Because when that program gets some teeth and operates with sufficient resources, a collateral benefit will be saving. You can then use those savings to invest in sustainability.
Officers, if he doesn't stop, he needs to be escorted. But thank you for coming. We want to give everyone the same amount of time for public comment. So thank you for, thanks for coming.
Before my clock starts, I want to do something here. We've got a whole lot of people up here, and I think we're all worried about it. You've got the spray sitting here, but I brought some of my own, just in case we didn't have any, okay? I want to spray it down there. And I'll wipe it off with this Clorox wipe and get it good and clean. And one, while I'm doing this, since it's a technical, you started my clock. Don't start my time. I'm not talking yet. I'm doing what you all should be doing, okay? Because I don't want to put my hands on here where everybody's touched it. You're still going. That's okay, because you let us speak anyway, Brownie. You had a public comment a minute ago, and no public comment, and we don't get to comment on anything with the budget. So here's the budget, right here. I pull a car row. Here's my sheet. I want you to look at this. This is the tax rate. It's all the same. See that, folks? See that TV camera? If you'll show it, it's all the same. Oh, that's great. We're charging the same. We're charging the same. We're charging the same. But look at your revenue. It's going up. Why is it going up? Because housing's going up. And what's your number one priority? Affordable housing. So every time you don't have a tax decrease, you are decreasing the supply of affordable housing because it's going up in value. And I've never seen this board in 20 years do much of a drop. And I never saw tonight, not one person speak up and say, "I want a report." How many reports have we got in here that the people saw where their money went? Guys, y'all said you're going to do that. When I say guys, I mean gals too, because everybody's equal today. You don't make a difference. You can be whatever you want to be. I couldn't just say, hey, things. But nobody gives a report on where the money goes and what the efficiency rate is. How many people ride on the bus? How many miles they ride? All of those things that was involved in accountability. And it wouldn't be a better time to follow than right after Tim Flora, because we had faith. And by the way, Avril, it does, and I hope I got your name right, it did sound good to give, have a county manager give a report, and you talk very well and present yourself real well, which is another unusual thing for this board. So all I'm saying is, I want to know what you're going to do about getting affordable housing when everything you're doing is spending money like crazy. And you discuss opening the hotels. Well, you know, don't let them open. We're just keeping closed for a while till we have another week to concentrate on it. You pull your finger out, you stick it up your nose if it's sanitized. So go ahead, folks, and sanitize it. Please, and start sticking your finger up your nose and figure out something.
All right. Thank you so much. Who's next? Who would like to speak next? Yes, sir. And just let us know your name, and thanks for being here.
So my name is Max, and so I've been on the ground for the past two weeks protesting, seeing thousands of Ashevilleians and residents from the county come out and say that they need a defunding of the criminal justice system and the police force, and that includes the sheriff. We are not going to ignore that the county sets their budget separately from APD and the city council budget. There were hundreds of people in front- There are, there were hundreds of people in Franklin and Silva this weekend in the rural south, the red Republican south, demanding a defunding of the police force. This is quite widespread, and if this is supposed to be a representative democracy, the voices of the representatives need to fit the voices of those who they claim to represent. And there is no reason that there should be, like our fellow speaker said earlier, there is no reason that we should be cutting health benefits, cutting health budget to mission and to the health. That's way more important to public safety than guns and new vehicles for the sheriff's office. That, that's not protecting anyone. There is, if we want to end crime and we want to lessen crime in Buncombe County, we need to change the disparities, the racial disparities, and the disparities between the rural and city educational systems. We have the most segregated and education system in the entire state. And I think that is perfectly representative in the budget with the city counts, like with the Asheville City Schools getting minute chump change compared to the county schools. And I went to Asheville High School, and I saw that. I saw that on the ground. I saw that from what the teachers had to do to make teaching their curriculum possible. And hearing about the present, seeing like five resource officers at Asheville High at all times, and hearing from cousins and friends that went to county schools about how they had a lot more funding, they had a lot more resources, they had more extracurriculars, and they had a smaller police presence, yet they had, they had better graduation rates, they had better success rates. I, I just don't see how, like, the logic isn't there, like, how we can't see the inconsistency.
All right, thanks, Max. All right, who's next? Who would like to go next?
Please do not touch the microphone. It says I violated that already. Well, my name's Michael Whitmire, and I live at 23 Northview Street here in Asheville. And I just want to express that we're in a real time of change in this country. And there's a lot of things people are looking at needing to be changed, that have been needing changing for a long time. And one of those is the criminal justice and police system of this country, of the state, of the county, of the city, and our own outlook on how that works in our country as citizens and in our heart. And I appreciate everyone in this room, being here and showing up to hold space for democracy today. But I know with the roots of the police system being in part having a very racist foundation, the same way that the roots of our country were built on a racist foundation, and built, I believe, on the overuse of force in response to social problems, it's vital that at every level of our country, including this county, including Buncombe County, we deeply, deeply change how we structure and fund the systems that serve our people. This is a moment when citizens and governments across the country are looking into how to make this change real. And it's a moment we need to step back and deeply consider how we bring budgeting to which services in the country. At the least, a postponement of the approval of this budget would give more time for the people and the service, the service providers, all of us employed here, all of y'all employed by the city, by the county who are here, to have the time to reflect on a few changes and listen to some of the demands of the people and the citizenry, especially those who have not typically been listened to. So I ask, at the very least, to postpone this budget and take the week, and then, from there, move forward in making the deep, deep changes that the people of the country, of Asheville and of Buncombe County have been showing up on the streets so often to demand. This is a serious shift. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitmire. Who would like to be next?
Hi. Thank you, Chairman. My name is Ian Quinn. I live in Weaverville, and I have worked in Asheville since August. And as a member of this community, I demand that taxpayer money be, of this community, be used to help all members of Buncombe County, especially those who need it most. Increasing spending to our Sheriff's Department and jail system does not serve the needs of this community. Rather, those institutions continue a reprehensible legacy of devaluing and disenfranchising the most vulnerable among us. Our police system in this country is corrupt and unjust, and in particular terrorizes the lives of Black and Brown Americans every day. I believe that Black lives matter. And if you believe that they do as well, you will not support increasing spending to a system that has destroyed the Black community through mass incarceration and unjust criminal justice system that makes a mockery of right and wrong. The budget allocations for public safety should be used to make our community safer, funding more educators, social workers, EMTs, and medical first responders, affordable housing in development, to name a few. In closing, defund the police, defund the Sheriff's Department, defund the county jails, and fund the works that the public really need. Postpone the vote on the budget to give more time to listen to the people and what they really want. Thank you. I yield my time.
All right, thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Hi. My name is, my name is Tajah Ventrella. I've lived in Asheville for 11 years. I live and work in West Asheville, where I own a business. I'm a personal trainer. I recently learned that the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department and jail is looking to get an extra $3 million during global protests demanding defunding of police and Sheriff's Department. I also learned that the Health Department is slated to get a decrease in funding during a global pandemic that kills people. Putting more money into an already bloated Sheriff's Department while cutting public health funding tells me that you would rather your consist, your constituents live with police, police violence and die of COVID-19. Die. You would rather us die than reallocate funds. I demand a resignation of Police Chief David Zach and of Mayor Esther Manheimer. I demand defunding of the Sheriff's Department and jail and that money put into social programs. I demand that you listen to the Black leaders of Asheville informing community alternatives to policing. And I demand an immediate cease of criminalization of poverty, addiction, and homelessness. How you move forward shows us, your constituents, what your priorities are, the status quo or our lives. This is my first time speaking to a council like this or really being involved in city or local politics. It is not my last. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who's next?
Hi there. My name is En. I'm here today to support the calls of many other community members to reduce the funding to the Sheriff's Department and to the jail. If you want even a simple measure, you can consider not approving the $1 million for a new sheriff's fleet or the $3.5 million slated to build a new complex for all the vehicles. You already have existing vehicles and facilities to take care of these things. These are a simple measure that you can do immediately to give money where it's really needed in social services, community development, and other health measures that are... I, I do have some faith in, in the systems that are already there in the public health sector, but not when it comes to policing. And that particularly for this council pertains to the Sheriff's Office and the jail. I'm also very concerned about the commissary at the jail. They're often not very affordable and extremely just price gouging for inmates there. I've noticed that the county has already released at least 200 inmates in the jail in the last month. I would encourage you to do better with that. COVID-19 is extremely well-equipped to spread in closed facilities like the jail, and I encourage you to release any nonviolent offenders that are in the jail currently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Hi. My name's Veronica Coit. Commissioners should recognize that name from earlier in this meeting. I want to thank the community for nominating me for one of the Governor's Awards that I won tonight. The introduction is typically where I thank the council for hearing me today, but I will not thank you. Ordering public comment in person in the middle of a global pandemic as our state and county rise in hospitalizations and positive cases is not only immoral, but is unethical and a slap in the face to the health and safety of the people that you represent. You must meet the demands of Black leaders. You must pressure the city for Manheimer and Zach to resign. You must begin defunding the Sheriff's Office and radically change the spending habits of our jail. I firmly believe we should move forward towards abolishment and focus instead towards community services. There is no reforming the blatant and deep corruption. Abolish the TDA. I'm here risking my life this afternoon to demand the defunding of Buncombe County Sheriff's Office budget by a minimum of 50%. Those dollars can do a lot of good in our community instead of perpetuating the abuse against our citizens. The funding and spending situation at our jail must also radically change. I demand change. The actions and inactions in our community's dire time of need are inexcusable and unforgivable, and actions speak louder than words. I demand you stop cowering to the hoteliers, breweries, and tourists over your own people. I demand you stop allowing your fellow leaders to line their pockets while gleefully destroying my home. I, if you will not stop and help now, you must resign. We've all seen enough. As Anita Hill said, certainly in a democracy, the people are more powerful than the people in charge.
All right, thank you. Who would like to speak next? Do, are there more people waiting?
I don't see any more people in the hallway. We do have some voicemails as well that Max, we got a few of them, who goes on a public hearing for Bliss as well.
Okay. But we think all the folks who are here for in-person comment have had a chance to speak.
I don't see anybody in the hallway.
Okay. Well, why don't we play the, and do you know how many voicemails we have? Or approximately?
I think we have three voicemails and five emails.
Okay. Can you play the voicemails?
Yep.
Great, thank you. And are those the comments?
Hi. My name is Matilda Bliss. I live in Asheville. I am commenting on the budget tonight. Looking at the increase for Buncombe County Sheriff's Office and the detention center, and simultaneously, you're looking at the very small amount that is going towards the Public Health Department during a pandemic. I would request that, that money be rerouted to things like public health to actually save people's lives instead of to oppressive departments like the Sheriff's Office. We're finding this out across the country that when it takes, when we use a little bit of creativity, when we actually think big, we can do great things, and we can actually have a community-based models around public safety and resolving conflicts. And that so many of us are asking for the defunding of budgets because that's what's needed for our communities. And we believe that we're good enough, we're good enough to do that, that we have skills among our members. And if we just use a little bit of imagination, we can find a way to defund the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center by half. Let's, let's have that conversation. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Jacob Tedman, and I am a resident of Asheville. I'm calling today to demand an immediate defunding of APD. I, along with other citizens, have witnessed our resources and money drained into a massive and disproportionately funded police force. We need the millions that have increasingly gone to the police instead to go to services and organizations that are more effective in reducing the root of crime. Affordable housing, livable wages, mental health services, access to health care and education are all, as research has proven, far more effective in creating a healthier and happy community for everyone. Black and Brown folks are being disproportionately profiled, brutalized, and murdered. It is in police departments training to be weaponized and ready for violence, and it must stop now. APD has proven time and time again that it is harmful to our Black community members. We must end the practice of brutality and mass incarceration that is ruining lives and instead invest in community safety programs that focus on healing and ending a practice deeply rooted in reinforcing white supremacy and structural racism. We are witnessing history repeat itself, and you have the power to change the narrative. Please make the responsible decision to defund APD. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren. I'm from Asheville proper, and I'm calling in regards to the Buncombe County budget for the 2020-2021 year. And my comment is that we should be specifically using the budget to go towards more community-based solutions instead of putting more money towards the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. I recognize the importance of the trust between the community and the police, and currently, there is little to none. So we need to have better solutions, and I encourage you to be creative and lean on the works of other cities such as Camden, New Jersey, to think about ways in which we can defund the police and allocate those resources to other parts of the community. Thank you.
Are those all the voicemails?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm gonna read the written submitted comments on the budget as well. I think there's five. All right, the first is from Bob Day. "The proposed budget is basically a good one, but I suggest the following: Under public health, there should be a delineated, specific COVID-19 category with plans and protections that are budgeted. We will be in the height of the pandemic midway through the fiscal year, yet there's no mention of COVID. All Buncombe County employees making more than $200,000 a year salaries paid by taxpayers should be reduced by 3% to 5% for FY2021. Thousands are without jobs in Buncombe County. The savings and salaries can help with Buncombe One Fund or increase county budget reserves for the future." Thank you. The next comment is from Uda Branstadter in Woodfinn. "I'm writing to voice my opposition to the slashing of funding for the Woodfinn Wave and Greenway. As a resident of Woodfinn and an avid runner, kayaker, and biker, I've been anxiously awaiting the completion of this much awaited, much anticipated project. While I'm personally saddened by the removal of this budget item, I believe the county as a whole will miss out on a potential economic and recreational asset which would improve the quality of life for many county residents. As a public health nurse, I know the importance of access to safe recreational..." As a public health nurse, I know the importance of access to safe recreational areas in improving health and reducing the rates of chronic disease such as diabetes and hypertension. The Woodfinn Greenway and Woodfinn Wave would provide much-needed recreational areas in this part of the county. I hope you will reconsider slashing this particular item from the county budget." The next comment is from Michael McHugh, Chair of the Library Board. "We would like to express enthusiastic support for staff recommendations to go into a facility study project for our Buncombe libraries. This expenditure is terrifically needed and long overdue. As you realize, the majority of our library facilities are outdated and not a credit to our community. Our library board truly needs this $267,000 study by professionals to identify and quantify what needs to be looked at for intelligent planning. We'll do our part to follow up, generating support for your decision. District 3 especially has inadequate library facilities compared to the rest of Buncombe County. The sense of your library advisory board is that the main PAC library is especially overdue for redesign and improvement right away. Compared to other communities our size, it's unattractive, cramped, and substandard. I anticipate the consultants will benchmark PAC and provide objective findings showing it needs overhaul. Mr. Blanton was brought in from another city with much better facilities, has the experience and vision, and has our full support to spearhead quality and cost-effective facilities improvements. Thanks for including this work in a budget amendment." The next comment is from Joseph Barwick. "As interim president of AB Tech for the past five months, I've been keenly aware of the level of commitment of this Board of Commissioners and staff in county management. These are more difficult times than I have experienced in my long professional career, and I truly appreciate the leadership you've displayed. On behalf of AB Tech, I want to reaffirm our role in serving as your partner and making Buncombe County more prosperous and full of opportunity for all citizens. That said, we accept the county budget as proposed and will do our part to make it work for our students, our employees, and our community. Thank you all for your support you have given the college throughout years." The last comment is from Katie Estrada. "My husband owns a small business, and I'm a teacher and small business owner as well. We are raising our three children here in Buncombe County where they attend the Asheville City Schools. I'm calling regarding the adoption of the budget. In light of the recent Black Lives Matter protests within Asheville, North Carolina, our nation and world..." Excuse me. "I'm asking the county commissioners to make a more overt and visible commitment to racial justice. I demand that the budget vote be delayed so that county managers and commissioners may find ways to redirect money away from the Sheriff's Department towards a more ethical and equal reallocation of the county's expenditures. I would like to see funding reallocated into sectors that facilitate the dismantling of racial and class inequality. Many cities in our nation have begun this work. There are models. Research shows that a living wage, access to holistic health services and treatment, educational opportunity, and stable housing are far more successful at reducing crime than police or prisons. Our three children attend Asheville City Schools, and every year, parents, teachers, administrators, and city officials throw their hands in the air due to the ever-expanding achievement gap. It's all connected. I demand more aggressive financial support directed to those areas and within the marginalized communities within Buncombe County. I fully support and back my vote, my vote, action, and legislation that addresses the racism and inequality within all systems of our society. Can I count on you to consider an alternative budget that puts a stronger focus on education, social service programs?" All right, that's all of the comments. All right. Are there other folks who came in who want to comment on the budget in person? Okay, all right. So I think we've taken all the public comments, so I believe we can adjourn the public hearing. So I will close the public hearing on the budget at 6:45.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion. We approve the budget with the following amendments. It can be one, or it can be multiple. One is that we provide the funding of the Buncombe County Schools at 1.49 million with the city schools receiving their share. And also, part of that would be the $65,000 for the playground equipment at the various schools that have... I don't think it was in the budget. It was in a previous pass, so they have the information on that. But I would like to make that motion with that amendment, please.
I'd like to second it.
Okay.
And one other comment, Chairman, I'm sorry. And that increase would come out of the... Would not be adjustment rate. It would come out of their general fund, their...
Fund balance.
Fund balance. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Let me ask... I want to ask a procedural question to our council. So we had the public hearing on the agenda. One of the questions... And we talked about this earlier. One of the questions was, are we actually going to vote on this tonight?
Yeah, that's true.
Or at the next meeting? So I think we need to answer that before we...
That's fine.
And if we answer that in the affirmative, then I think your motion is...
Yeah, you're right, Chairman. Thank you.
Is in order. So why don't we discuss that procedural question first? If the majority of the commission wants to vote tonight, we'll vote tonight. If we want to do it at a special meeting one week from today, we'll do that. Any comments on that question?
I mean, I'm...
Obviously, y'all want to do it now. So how do other commissioners feel about that?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I think that that motion of yours, your proposal of yours, would be in order if Mr. Belcher would yield to that because he has a motion which has precedence at this time.
Well, let me ask that, just to make sure, yeah, we're getting the process right. So on the agenda tonight, we had the budget public hearing. But we actually... I guess, did we actually have the budget on the agenda, too?
Yes.
Okay, so it is in order. Okay, okay. All right, thank you. I just want to make sure we're doing that right. Okay, so I'm going to agree that the motion is a valid motion. And with that said, I do think we... So the motion stands. It's in effect, and it's been seconded. I guess my question is, let's talk about, does the majority want to act on the budget decision tonight? Or do we want to act on it at our next meeting a week from today? It's just part of discussion on the motion, right?
Mr. Belcher would need to agree to that.
Okay, I'm just...
About the motion that's on the floor.
And I've agreed to that. I've agreed to that. I'm just saying there's further...
I would need to agree for his... To what he just said.
I believe so, too. Yes.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem if it's the... You know, if will the board do it now or do it then. You know, I'm not going to make it... I mean, that would be my motion, that I intend to make that today.
And it's in effect. The motion's in effect now. So it's on... I'm just saying, further discussion on the motion. One question I have is, is tonight the right time to vote on this? Or do people want to take some additional time before we make a final decision? So there's... Certainly, people are welcome to make other questions or comments as well on the motion and the budget issue. Any other comments, Board members?
Okay.
Wake up everybody.
Yes. I like the motion that... I think with what we went through here and not knowing what the schools are going to be, I feel like we need to go ahead and fund them. I know they're getting, what, $5 million county manager from the CARE Act, which I don't know whether that will fit into it. But I think this time, we need to take care of the schools. And as far as a playground, it is something that I'm hearing from the public more and more, especially whenever it comes up to your public health, that the kids will be able, if they can go back to school, that they can, you know, at least get the exercise and stuff that they need. And with COVID, you know, it's just more places for them to be that, you know, instead of just with one or two items on their playground. I think we ought to look at the health and safety of them. That is mentally, too, that will help them kids. And I think with all us not knowing what's going to happen is not a lot of money. We've wasted money more in different ways that I'd like to go ahead and fund this Buncombe County Schools and the city.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we approve this, where will that take our fund balance?
It would still be above the 15.5% right now.
Still be above the 15.
Yeah, I think we were at 16.6 before, and so we should be okay.
So I'll just jump in. I'm generally supportive of the proposed budget's level. I personally would prefer to take an additional week to just think about the budget. But if we are going to vote tonight, I would support it. My personal preference would be to take another week to, you know, think about this. We usually have the hearing, and then we vote in the... You know, we vote following that. So I'd be happy to take it up at our meeting next week. But if we are going to vote on it tonight, I am supportive of those funding levels. Further comments?
If we fully fund the Buncombe County Schools' request, what does that amount increase to percentage-wise for Asheville City Schools? Do we know that offhand?
We can get it.
Thank you.
I think Buncombe County is 1.49. Is that right?
Something like that. Yeah, I was trying to remember.
I think that's right.
It's about 17% of the county schools' population, I think. So it'd be proportionally something like 17% of that amount.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Whitesides, what are your... What's your thoughts?
You know, my thoughts is, when you look at the budget, and when I look at the good job the staff has done with it and with what we're proposing to the schools, and I would support that, I'm for moving tonight to do it. I don't know what, wait a week would... Wouldn't change much for me.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards, what are your thoughts at this time?
I fully support fully funding the request for Buncombe County Schools and increasing that for Asheville City Schools. And I'm not sure if my mind would change too much between now and next Tuesday based on that.
Jasmine, what are your thoughts?
I appreciate the motion. I'm in a similar place. I think as we move through this discussion, I think I'd love to just kind of take a moment and hear people's thoughts about sort of the approach we'll take as we move through this fiscal year. We obviously have a set of projections about the kind of revenue loss we'll see. We have some question marks around the kind of needs we'll see related to COVID-19 response. I think we know the schools, even if fully funded, their needs exceed that. So maybe what I... Maybe just to summarize that, is a request that we just kind of... More than we typically would in the immediate months following a budget vote, that we kind of keep these issues front and center. And I also just want to kind of recognize that Sheriff Quentin Miller is here and would like the opportunity, as we move forward, to be in dialogue with him and community members around how we move forward on criminal justice issues in our community. And certainly here, there's a lot of pain in our community right now around those issues. And I think it's important that we show up at the table for those discussions. And so I just kind of wanted to take a minute to kind of throw those things in the mix. But I'm prepared to vote tonight. I'm prepared to vote next week.
All right, well, it sounds like a majority would like to vote tonight, so I'm happy to... I know, I'm just observing that. The majority have said that they want to vote tonight, so I'm not trying to...
To vote tonight. And, you know, I'm usually the one that wants to put everything off a week. And, you know, after listening to a couple of you, I think we're all wanting to support the schools. And, I mean, I'm glad on the playground, too, because I guess that's part of it, of what it is. But, you know, should we? I think the public had maybe thought we was going to wait and do it on 23rd. I mean, I'm going to leave it. Sometimes, you know, maybe if we do think about it a day or two and could look at something... I'm not going to change my mind on what the motion is. But if there's something else that we may be overlooked or something. So I'm going to leave it up to six other commissioners.
All right. Commissioner Penland? You've seconded the motion.
Sir, I second the motion.
Any other comments you'd like to share?
No, sir. I don't think my mind's going to change a week from now.
I do want to comment, Chairman, on the work that's been done on the budget. And we've had three passes headed, plus multiple work sessions. And those have been... They've been put out there. We've heard, you know, a lot of varied comments tonight that will, as we move forward in the future, that we'll be listening to and working through. I am... We heard something from the airport, and, you know... And I've been accused of being way too optimistic, but it's not based on just how I feel. The economy, since I've been here in 1980, is very resilient in Buncombe County. So I expect, when we go back to school, when we have other needs, as sales tax increases, as we come back, that, you know, that... I have confidence that the staff has done a good job in their estimates, that we're going to be very, very safe. And I appreciate the question regarding the fund balance because I... I mean, my numbers were saying that we was okay, too, with that. But I thank the commission for the hard... For the staff and the commission for their hard work dedication on the budget. And I'll leave it at that. Ready to vote.
I have one more thing. Commissioner Whiteside and myself, we're on the Audit Committee. And something was brought up tonight about our Audit Committee. And we have, during our board meetings, that we're on... We have talked about adding a staff the last two years, and we have not. So, you know, that might be another reason I might want to wait a week to look into that, to see or think about that. And Commissioner Whiteside would like to chime in to kind of maybe see if we need to do it or if y'all are ready now.
Well, I think when you talk about the Audit Committee and what we've looked at, and even from listening to our internal audit in our last meeting, one of the things that we talked about was, and I go along with this, is that before we look at hiring another person in internal audit, we should look at other ways, like one is software that will help. Because now, a lot of advancements have been made. And I know it started when I was still at the bank, you know. But in internal auditing, you know, if we need to upgrade our software, and then, once we do that, we can look and see, do we need, you know, where we need the help. And I think that should be the first stage before. And I know in the Audit Committee, I think everybody, even in our internal auditor, if you remember, agreed with that. And I think, to me, that's going to be critical if we can find the funds as we go on in the year. Hopefully, this COVID will be, you know, down. We should look at that, Rob. And I think before, and I agree with, before hiring, you know, a person, I think we should look at that software because that could really help and make us more efficient as well as reduce the number of people we'll probably need because we're unsure now yet.
All right, any further comments on the motion? I'll just share a couple. I also just want to express appreciation to the county staff for their hard work on this. County manager and Finance Department Budget Office. This has, you know, been a very challenging time for the county's operations in so many different fundamental ways since February. And but I think we have, you know, worked hard to try to make this budget process as meaningful and as substantive as we can, even in kind of a context that's been very different from any other one that we've ever gone through before and hopefully won't have to go through again next year. As hopefully, we have this a little bit in the rearview mirror. But a lot of hard work has gone into this. I think there are a lot of great... You know, budgets are really about kind of representing your goals and values. And there are a lot of great things included in this budget that I think reflect a lot of the ideas, you know, this past year. And a lot of this was, of course, before the COVID-19 pandemic arrived. But the county has put more work into public outreach, strategic planning, public engagement than we ever had before. And I think... than we ever had before. And, and I think a lot of those ideas have been incorporated and included in this budget. And, and I think that's, that's made it a better, a better budget plan than we've, we would have had otherwise. We know this is a really tough time for families and businesses in our community. I'm glad this budget represents not having a property tax increase in it, maintaining the current property tax rate. I think that's a good thing. I've voted for property taxes several times in my work here. It's never fun to do, but now's not the right time to do that. We want to exercise fiscal discipline and get through this time working with our community. So anyway, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this and look forward to approving it.
Chairman, I do want to add one thing. I think it's important on this budget to note that Robert and Jasmine and Commissioners have.
Thank you very much. I think it's important to also just say about the work on the, you know, early child, early childhood and that there was an increase in there for that. And I was glad to see that and glad that y'all were able to work through that and be able to achieve that. So I appreciate that as part of the budget too.
Do you have a comment?
Well, just, just thank you and to Commissioner Whitesides and Presley. And there's 12 community members who sit on that committee with us who, boy, have they put in their hours. Site visits all over the county, hours and hours of deliberations to revise our grant making process and make some really tough decisions. But I, I just do want to report back to the full board since it came up and I know there's such strong commitment on this issue that the caliber of projects that have been recommended this year really represents, I think, exactly the, 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 the dream and vision that we all shared in passing this. We're seeing projects that create new centers that will serve more than 100 children. We see projects that are collaborations between Buncombe County Schools, for instance, and Werner, which will create a new early childhood center on the site of Emma Elementary. So I think this, this fund is really starting to get some momentum and traction behind it and can't say enough about all the, all the work that's going into that and including also staff from strategic partnerships and performance management and community engagement that have sort of been there every step of the way. So thank you all for the, the depth of support on this issue in particular.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd also like to just echo the sentiment thanking the early childhood education. As we've heard about equity in our schools and about the most marginalized children in our community and them starting schools so far behind, I think Buncombe County is on the right track to starting to address that early. And while we can't, we can't take care of every single child right now, I think we're looking toward the future on that. And I'm excited to see what that looks like for our kindergarteners as they start to move through school who have been a part of the early childhood education programs that Buncombe County's supporting. And I hope that goes a long way to start to erase those inequities, the opportunity and achievement gaps for our children. Thank you all.
And I would say from being on the committee, our work has exceeded my expectations. I didn't think we would be able to be where we are in our second year, to be honest with you. But thanks to the people we have on and the support we have from our staff have made it, made life a lot easier for us. And I think we're accomplishing what we need to accomplish for the kids of Buncombe County because in giving them the foundation that they'll need to succeed.
That's very good because Al, the first year, we didn't know what, you know, it was. And I was the one sitting in this seat right here and 3.6 million absolutely made me fringe. That spending that much money. But if you've seen what's happened in the last two years of what we've done is absolutely amazing how all 12 people come together. The ones that's going into it with what we're going through has really stepped up because we needed a little more money, but went back to them and asked them, who can live off of the bear but not lose anything? And I think we're going to see this in the next two or three years of what really this program has done. And Jasmine, Al, you know where I was two and a half years ago and, you know, there's nobody loves kids more than me, but I just did not see how the program was going to work then. But I wish all the commissioners could sit in and see what has been accomplished in, you know, 14 months really.
That's great.
And I want to thank staff, Avril. This three straight years, we ain't had a tax increase and I tell you, we love it. Thank the staff.
All right. Paul, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me take one step back. We can't accomplish all of this with one motion. Is that correct or do we need to?
How many do we need?
Projects ordinance.
Okay. So this is for the budget ordinance and then we'll have a separate one for the capital projects.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for clarification, this is for the?
What about fire tax?
It's in, it's in.
It's in budget ordinance.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Now, where are we going to vote on, if we're voting tonight or are you saying that the majority wants to vote tonight?
Hey, Robert, I love you, but that ship sailed.
I didn't hear it take off. You know, I've been sitting here.
I think a majority have expressed.
Well, majority, but so no one changed their mind?
No.
We tried, right?
Okay. Well, it's always opposite of what I want.
You'll be all right. Yeah. We're, we're, we're praying for Virginia right now.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the capital projects ordinance?
I move that we approve the capital projects as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We come next to.
Chairman, could we take a 10-minute recess?
I think it's a wise idea. Let's take a, let's, let's. Take a 10-minute break.
Everything comes up.
Yeah, exactly.
That I was.
Yeah.
That I first met.
They were involved.
No.
No, no.
What you need?
Yeah.
No.
Five, five. I was raised and all that. I'm involved, I was involved anyway. And, you know, going to.
Yeah.
Eight.
Yeah.
We had. We had to be. We had.
Yes.
We had. We had to be, you know, we didn't have any choice.
Well, I like this. It's a great.
Oh, thank you. I have my other ones I left.
Local.
And so I have to leave in my car, so.
Well, yeah, it's good, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, I got called.
But you know, they're trying to sell that. The family life center is trying to sell.
All right, let's reconvene this meeting.
Oh, let me turn.
And we've got a couple of different budget amendments we need to address, and John Hudson is gonna help walk us through these.
Okay.
The first is a budget amendment for coronavirus relief fund grants.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple of weeks ago, you folks heard about the coronavirus relief fund dollars from the state? And these are federal funds that sent to us from the state to about four, four and a half million dollars. And these are to cover related COVID-19 health-related expenditures. So we will distribute about one, well, over 1.4 million dollars of those, of that money to local municipalities and fire districts. And this budget amendment tonight is to develop, to put that 1.4 million dollars into the grants fund to reimburse those municipalities and fire districts for their eligible expenses. We will also be putting aside money for salary and benefits to pay for a grants coordinator with these dollars to ensure compliance. So the remaining dollars will, do not require a budget amendment as we will be putting those in the general fund and to offset against potential contingency dollars if we need to spend those.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion to approve the authorization of the grant coordinator position and approval of the budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next is a budget amendment for solid waste, indirect cost, and capital.
So the solid waste being enterprise fund, they, we, the, we charge them from the general fund for indirect costs such as support from the county manager's office budget, finance, and IT, for examples. And since we, since the plan comes in a year early, it sometimes has to have adjustments. So the, this amendment increases the expense budget by $234,105 to accommodate the indirect cost increase that was then done after the realization of additional indirect costs at the end of the year. It also appropriates $134,000, $131,064 of fund balance to cover expenditures for capital costs of a brake trailer replacement for staff and garage improvements for creating additional working space to the west and south sides of the existing single bay garage area at the landfill. So this will create a safer, more productive work area for the fleet maintenance personnel up at the landfill. So solid waste fund but, balance is able to cover this funding. And I think Dane is here, if there are questions.
Is there a motion to approve this budget amendment?
Second.
All right, there's a motion in second by Commissioner Belcher. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next is a budget amendment for fleet services complex.
So we have a presentation to go with that, Mike Mace is here.
Commissioners? General Service has requested $3.5 million in F21 to construct a new fleet service complex. New facility would be used to maintain our vehicle fleet with additional bays to support our growth, outsourced work, and solid waste trucks and trailers. Our current fleet service garage has no room for expansion, inadequate parking, safety concerns with traffic, and the proximity of the transfer station. As you can see from this aerial site view here, Hominy Creek Road is a two-lane road, it's a dead-in road. Goes to, also to a park and to a business, business that's established at the end. So you can see that the traffic flow is very difficult at times. Also, the fleet service is sitting next to the transfer station, which also causes issues with the fleet service department from debris and things like that. As you can see, over the past few years, our fleet has increased roughly 40%. In 2020, we have 420 vehicles, which we currently have on our records. We have 10 extra vehicles, which we are keeping for COVID operations. So the current facility has six bays, four technicians, and one supervisor. Five bays, and the alignment machine occupies at least the sixth bay. Space limitation requires outsourcing oftentimes. Our new facility features would include additional bays, expanded space for equipment, parts and fluids, additional parking, and the ability to work on transfer station trucks and trailers, which we currently are not capable of doing. There is also potential for co-location of all of our general services, which is made up of maintenance, grounds, and the fleet service staff. General Service released a request for qualifications for architectural and services and design for the fleet complex. We vetted 14 responses and selected CPL based on their qualifications. So we're here tonight to ask the board if they would approve a contract with CPL architect and engineering and planning to design fleet service complex. That ask is $243,000.
I may not have been paying attention, but where is this, where is this going?
It's gonna go at the old landfill.
Okay.
That's our hopes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Further discussion, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next is the budget amendment for comprehensive facilities assessment.
Yes. Mike's also gonna present on this one.
So during their November 19th board meeting, General Services was approved to release a request for qualifications in order to select an architect and engineering firm to assist the county in creating a comprehensive facilities plan with an option to include 12 libraries. Plan will focus on two main areas, building condition assessments and space management planning for nearly 2 million square feet of buildings. Data collection will be provided strategic guidance for future capital improvement plans and operational budget. Departments may be participating in workshops, surveys, and other data collection activities. Space need recommendations may combine elements, combine, eliminate, add, or otherwise optimize our space. Building maintenance recommendations could include exterior envelope integrity, repairs, structural components, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, infrastructure upgrades, life safety, and interior finish needs. Scope of work is 26 buildings. We've also included the libraries back on the 19th. We mentioned to the board that we may not be able to fund that, or we were gonna try to fund that through a grant, which didn't come to fruition. So we also would like to include that study along with our county, county plan. So this is not an all-inclusive list of the things that are gonna be done, but all, all facilities will have documentation on their current building conditions. Will project future building needs based on space needs, provide recommendations on aging buildings, and develop a 15-year capital plan from those studies. We also included our libraries on the plan. In order to determine the library's system space needs, additional data collection will be needed such as benchmarking comparisons against regional peer libraries, national libraries, state standards, and state accreditations. We're gonna conduct web-based surveys, identify opportunities and constraints associated with facilities and sites, determine service gaps in libraries, recommend the number and placement of branches for alternative library services, just to mention a few. So General Service released our qualifications. RFQ 11 responded, and the top three were interviewed. We'd like to select CPL based on their qualifications. And General Service requests from the board commissioners to approve a contract for $835,780, which includes the library plans as well.
So I got a question on the RFQ.
Yes, sir.
Top three firms interviewed and scored by the panel, can you, do you have any information on, you know, the scoring and that process was?
It should be included in your packet.
Oh. You don't have the crib notes on that?
I don't have them in front of me. I do know that it was CPL, MHA Works, and Creech was our three top three.
I'm looking for it now, it's here.
Are there any questions or is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion in the second for approval of a budget amendment, amendment for comprehensive facilities assessment.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Mace, and thank you, Mr. Hudson. Okay, last item on our new business is. Sorry, thank you. Is consideration of a joint resolution to remove Confederate monuments and establish a jointly appointed community task force. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Amanda Edwards to get us started on this conversation.
Great. Great. Prior to reading the resolution, I would like to tee it up with a couple of comments to help put it in perspective of why I'm presenting this this evening. At the beginning of this meeting, we all said the pledge of allegiance. We say it every meeting. The last three words are justice for all. Yet, we continue to tolerate overt and covert disparities, injustice, and unequal treatment. In July of last year, I can't believe it's been almost a year, we began our strategic planning process. The input of hundreds of residents who participated in meetings throughout Buncombe County influenced the plan that we approved last month. To the people of Buncombe County, thanks to your voices and your input, we have adopted equity as a core value, equity as a foundational goal, and equity as the lens through which we'll view each of our strategic goals moving forward. We acknowledge that achieving our goals will require considering new and revised policies to ensure Buncombe County is an inclusive, safe, and equitable, equitable place of opportunity for everyone to work, play, and live. Over the past three weeks, we as a body have not made a statement on the murder of George Floyd and his harrowing death, and the deaths of Ahmaud Arbery and Breonna Taylor have affected and influenced our community. In the meantime, police officers around our nation have killed more African-Americans, most recently Rashard Brooks. Over the past three weeks, I have regularly prayed for peace. Until we know justice, we cannot know peace. Until we know and address racial inequities and over 400 years of oppression and structural racism, we cannot know justice. It is past time for us as county commissioners to speak up against racism. Speaking up is an act of leadership that can move us toward an anti-racist and equitable society. I strongly, strongly condemn the murders of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and Rashard Brooks amongst many, many others. And the ongoing racial injustices that people of color experience every single day in our community and nation. And I hope that each of you, as my colleagues, will join me. My faith, which I don't speak about often, teaches me that love means treating everyone with dignity, respect, and value for their life. These values and teachings are why I've dedicated my career and myself to public service. And these values and teachings led me to be here this evening with this resolution. These three monuments, Vance, Robert E. Lee, and the 60th Regiment were established as part of the whitewashing of the Civil War and the people who embraced the denial and oppression of the dignity and rights of African-Americans. Removing monuments does not erase history. What it does remove is the constant and visual reminder of people who either believed in or defended a system that did not treat African-Americans as equals. This resolution is just one step we can take as elected leaders of Buncombe County to address racial and systemic equities in our county. Removing the statues is a response to requests from the community and is only one step in this work ahead of us. I apologize that we waited for these requests. We should not have waited for the requests, but rather, we should have led the way. I acknowledge we have much work to do to both undo and to address racial and systemic inequities. We must be committed to listening to those most impacted by inequality and not talk over them or discount their voices, opinions, and experiences. They are not our experiences. I call on each of you, my commissioner colleagues, to embrace this tipping point and to choose to take action to make our community more inclusive, fair, and just. I will read the resolution, and I will ask you to join me in adopting it this evening. This is the joint resolution of the City of Asheville and Buncombe County to remove the Confederate monuments located at the Buncombe County Courthouse and in Park Square Park, and to establish a jointly approved task force to recommend action regarding the removal or repurposing of the Vance monument. Whereas, monuments to Confederate soldiers and military leaders, which were installed in Asheville and many other communities in the South in the late 19th and early 20th centuries by white Southerners seeking to preserve the Confederacy are widely, widely preserved. perceived as offensive and painful public reminders of the legacy of slavery and present realities of systemic racism in our country. Whereas, a memorial monument honoring the 60th Regiment of the North Carolina Confederate Soldiers currently stands in front of the Buncombe County Courthouse, sitting on county-owned land. And whereas, a memorial monument known as the Robert E. Lee Dixie Highway Colonel John Connolly marker is located in Pack Square, sitting on city-owned land. And whereas, both of these monuments were paid for and erected by a private organization known as the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and ownership of these monuments have never passed to either the city or the county. And whereas, a memorial monument known as the Vance Monument is also located in Pack Square Park, the former site of the county courthouse, which is the likely location where slaves were sold and traded locally. And whereas, African-American residents of the City of Asheville and Buncombe County have issued a clear call to remove and/or repurpose these monuments as expeditiously as possible due to the harm they pose, and to replace them with monuments that honor local African-American history and are created by African-American artists. And whereas, the Confederacy was formed by its political leaders for the express purpose of perpetuating and expanding slavery of African-Americans. And whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County recognize that the legacy of slavery, institutional segregation, and ongoing systemic racism directly harm public safety and public health. And whereas, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 100-2.1(c), the city and county are authorized to remove the two Confederate monuments from public property. And whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County are committed to promoting racial equity and justice and desire to express this commitment through a joint resolution of their respective governing boards. And whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County desire to remove Confederate monuments from the public spaces within the City of Asheville. And whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County desire specifically to remove the monument to Confederate soldiers from the grounds near the courthouse and the Robert E. Lee monument from Pack Square Park. And whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County desire to explore options for removing, relocating, or making alterations to the Vance monument. And whereas, it is the intent of the governing boards of the City of Asheville and Buncombe County that these monuments be replaced or altered in such a manner as to honor the local history of African-Americans. Whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County want to seek citizen input and particularly hear from those most impacted by the monuments regarding the future of the Vance monument by the establishment of a jointly-appointed task force, which will explore options including removal, relocation, and alteration of the monument. And whereas, the City of Asheville and Buncombe County approve this resolution jointly at separate meetings of their governing boards. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Asheville and the Buncombe County Commission, that request is hereby made to the United Daughters of the Confederacy to immediately remove the two Confederate monuments located at the Buncombe County courthouse and Pack Square Park. The City further requests that it receive from the United Daughters of the Confederacy its intent to remove the monument within 30 days, and that said removal is completed within 90 days. If the intent to remove is not received, or the removal is not completed within the specified timeframes from the date of full adoption of this resolution, then the City of Asheville and Buncombe County shall take action to remove the monuments. A jointly-appointed task force shall be established by the Asheville City Council and the Buncombe County Commission, consisting of not more than 12 members, whose appointments will be made in equal numbers by the two governing boards. This task force shall, within three months of all appointments being made, provide a report to the City Council and the County Commission with a recommendation regarding the removal and/or repurposing of the Vance monument. Once the report is presented, the task force shall perform such other duties as requested by the governing bodies. When no further action is requested, the task force shall dissolve. Upon passage of this resolution and until time as the monument is removed or repurposed, it shall be shrouded in order to reduce its impact on the community and to reduce the risk of harm it presents in its current state.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We have agreed as a commission to take, we've received a lot of public comments submitted both through emails and writing and voicemails from residents, and we've agreed to review those for one hour. There's about five hours of comments that have been submitted. So, we're going to review one hour of those, and we will publish all of the other records that came in, but we'll spend an hour listening to them this evening before, but before, and we'll, we'll get started on that in just, just a minute. But before we proceed, I'd like to ask if there's a, is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right. There's a motion in the second on the resolution. Commissioners, if there's no objection, I'd like to just go ahead and let's listen to the public comments that have been submitted, and then it'll come back to the commission for discussion.
If we could, just before we begin that, just noting, so we'll hear one hour of comments, and we'll have them read, some of the printed ones, is that correct?
I believe what we discussed was approximately 30 minutes of the voicemails that were left for the commission to listen to, and then we'll have the written comments also read for approximately 30 minutes.
Okay.
Yep.
And just, just for the record, and thank you to Mr. Joyner for compiling these. In total, between voice messages and email messages, we received 549 messages supporting the removal of monuments and 19 messages opposing the removal of monuments.
All right. Mr. Joyner, are you prepared to start, or which staff are going to start the audio recordings? Okay. Max, we're ready to start listening to the messages that residents have left. And we're starting this at, my, my, my watch is ahead of the clock here, but basically about 10 till 8 is when we're starting this part. So, we'll do this until about 20 after 8.
I understand you're the clerk for the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Please leave a message for them, especially Bernie Newman and Joe Belcher. I live in Chandler and been a resident here for probably 11 years now. And I'm very concerned about the movement that's going on to remove the Vance monument. They should not allow that. That's a prominent focal point of Asheville. It's not racist. Vance was a former governor. If you want to change the plaque on the front, fine, but tourism, that is a symbol of downtown Asheville. I've been in the tourism business for over 40 years, and all the photographs and everybody that I, that looks at Asheville knows of the Vance monument. Changing it, removing it would be absolutely ridiculous. Please have the county commissioners vote to leave that monument in place. Thank you.
This is Marshall Menard, 2330 Old Marshall Highway, Alexander 28701. It starts with the Vance monument, and then it goes to the Vance birthplace, and then it goes to Robert E. Lee with the general, and a lot of the grandfathers and great-grandfathers around here, and who knows who was in that war. And I think it's just disgraceful to take everything down that it's just part of the history. You start burning books in the middle of the public square, and it turns into something else, and it doesn't stop. Once you start succumbing to this stuff, it doesn't.
My name is Pam. I am calling in reference to the Vance monument. I do not want to take it down. It is part of heritage in this area. I do hope someone can take down the graffiti that some lowlife happened to spray on it to make it beautiful like it was before. I live in Madison County. Thank you.
Yes. This is Diane Rabian. I live on 4 LaRue Street in Asheville, North Carolina. I've been a resident of Buncombe County for 62 years, and I'm calling in reference to the Vance monument. And I would prefer that it not be taken down or changed because it is part of our history, and we can't change our history. We need to be teaching history to our children. So, I just wanted to let you know I'm not in favor of it being changed at all. Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Ponder. I live at 14 Ponder Worley Drive, Weaverville, North Carolina. Really cannot believe that y'all are considering taking down the monument. You know, that is part of history. That is history that has been there all of my life. I just don't understand why people can't just up and want something like that done, and, and it happens. You don't stop and think about the history behind it. It's just unbelievable what, what y'all do when somebody snaps their fingers and wants it done, and y'all do it. You don't take into consideration the history that's behind it. You know, we have to let other generations know the history of it, and it, you don't want them to know, and that's what's wrong.
Yes. My name is Linda Metcalf. I live in Weaverville, North Carolina. I was born and raised in Asheville, and it just breaks my heart to think about tearing down the Vance Memorial. It's always been a symbol of Pack Square. It's always been a designated landmark, and I just think it's a shame that all of a sudden all these people want to get rid of all the things that mean so much to the people who have lived in this area all of their lives. I think it's ridiculous to want to get rid of Civil War heroes. I don't understand why people can't just leave things alone and, and let people enjoy the things that we've always had to enjoy. Thank you for your time.
Yes. My name is Frances Jarrett. I live in Barnardsville, North Carolina. And please do not take down the Vance monument. At least vote on it. Our rights should be heard as much as anybody's rights. Please give us a chance to vote on it. Thank you.
My name is James Hyatt. I'm calling from Weaverville, North Carolina. I am calling regarding the removal of the Vance monument. I am opposed to removing it. I, I do not feel like that it, that it displays any racism. I feel like that it, it, it is an honor, is an honor to the man who did other great things as, as our governor and senator and legislator in our state. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
My name's Ronnie Leslie. I live in Weaverville, North Carolina. I don't agree with this monument taken down deal. I believe they trying to take care of all of our heritage by taking care of anything that has anything to do with the Confederacy. That's our heritage. You don't see them taking out the reenactment up there in North, up in Pennsylvania. You don't see them going after them statues or nothing about them, and they had slaves too, you know? So, and I don't think there's a person living today that lived in the slavery days. I think we need to put it behind us and move on as regular American people. Thank you.
My name is Ms. Roberts. I live in Weaverville, North Carolina. I was wondering if we wanted Martin Luther King monument taken down, would y'all be willing to take that down? You're willing to take everything else down, why not take him down? I would greatly like to hear your answer on this one in the commissioners' meeting. I really appreciate your time for listening to my comments, so I'd like to hear this one if you're going to take Martin Luther King's monument down. Thank you.
This is Mark Ingram. I live on Ox Creek. I feel that the idea of removing the Vance monument is ridiculous. Vance played an important role in this county's history, and what is done in the past is gone, and he is, his monument to his success and what he did there should remain. Thank you.
My name is Linda Hudley, and I'm in the Reynolds Community, Asheville, North Carolina, and I am totally against removing that monument. We do not need to destroy history. We need to learn about, don't destroy it. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Hill, and I live in Chandler, North Carolina. I was born in Buncombe County. I've lived here all my life, and I'm 74 years old. I am upset at what's going on now about the removal of landmarks that have different years, and I ask please that you would consider the opinion of the people and not just a few of the protesters. It's been there all my life, and nothing has ever been said until these last few weeks. And I think the people have a choice. We put you in your position, and we have, we should have the choice to vote whether it should be removed, not just the voice of the few, but the voice of the majority. And I would really appreciate it along with a lot of other of the residents here in Buncombe County that you consider this, especially at election time. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Anita Metcalf. I live in Lester, North Carolina, and I'm a Buncombe County resident, born and bred native, and I work for Mission Hospital, and I'm calling about the removal of the Vance monument. For that to be on the list of votes for the commission, I don't understand. I don't understand the fact that, you know, late 1863, the only locals in uniforms were home guards as governors. Vance was able to give assistance to people like Augustus Merriman, who did a job of, of holding carnage to many of them. And then there's, you know, aiding the recovery of the region during the miserable post-war years. That's why Vance has a monument, and Merriman has an Asheville street named after him. It has nothing to do whatsoever to do with slavery. I don't understand why people can't dig a little deeper and quit judging everything by the first thing that they hear. I know that it's a hard time right now in our country, but I feel like the Vance monument doesn't need to go anywhere, and if people knew he was an abolitionist and got himself together afterwards, maybe they wouldn't either. Thank you. Oh, my phone number is 828-713-0044. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Cassie Coleman. I'm calling from Buncombe County, and I'm calling to urge the Buncombe County Commissioners to remove the Confederate monuments in Pack Square or repurpose the Vance monument. This is really important because these were erected to rem... to remind black people that whites still have power. They still have control. And the arguments that say the Confederate flag or statues or monuments represent heritage not hate uh, really ignores the near universal heritage of African Americans. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
My name is Nick Lanning. I'm a resident of Asheville, North Carolina. I am calling in regard to the uh, removal of Confederate monuments and the Vance Monument. The Confederate monuments that have been erected in Asheville and across the country are monuments to a band of racist traitors uh, who who were part of a government that owned the last four years. Since the Civil War, we as Americans have been lied to, we've been fed propaganda about the Confederacy. It has been lionized as some sort of patriotic act, but all it was was a defense of slavery. These monuments are and are monuments to slaveholders and racists. We need to quit lionizing these people. We need to quit hero worshiping these people. And we need to recognize that most of these monuments were erected by the Da- Daughters of the Confederacy in the early of the twentieth, early twentieth century as a response to growing civil rights for black and brown people. These monuments need to be torn down. Our past needs to be remembered as it was, as a shameful period of human subjugation and these people should not be worshipped as heroes. I am calling in the council to remove these monuments. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ernie Boyd. I live in Asheville and I'm calling about removing the monuments. Um, I'm an old guy. I grew up in uh, Waynesville, um, left the mountains for quite a long time, moved back in nineteen ninety-six. And um, I think that this is something that's long overdue. Uh, my uh, my grandfather was uh, was Klan member. Um, he had died by the time I was born, but everybody prescribed that as the worst mistake he ever made. And I was raised um, in a family where race was right there on the kitchen table all the time. Um, and um, I was, I was thinking about it from the time I was little. Um, so um, I I um, I have sort of a strong feeling about this. Um, I doubt that there's any 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 purpose in repurposing uh, the the um, the Vance Monument. Um, but um, I I I think any- anything we do to to change it is is great and um, and absolutely removing it along with the Robert E. Lee one and the the one down by the uh, the courthouse. Um, and so I'm fully in support of removal, doing it as quickly as possible. Um, and I can't see any reason um, why we should be still honoring that stuff. Thanks very much. Bye.
Hello, my name is Roman Norse. I live over in the Bear Creek area of West Asheville. And the monuments that are erected within the Asheville city limits were erected to remind black men and women that whites still have power. They still have the control. The arguments that say the Confederate flag or statues and monuments monuments represented heritage not hate ignores the near universal heritage of African Americans. I support them being taken down and or repurposed. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jake Reed. I am an Asheville resident and I'm just calling in to voice the fact that um, I believe that Vance Monument needs to be taken down um, as quickly as possible. Um, thanks for your time. Bye.
Hello, my name is Nathan Crackle. I'm a resident of West Asheville. I'm calling to comment on the removal of Confederate monuments in Pack Square. Um, I think it's extremely offensive that we still have these standing as as well as the fact that so many names of roads in our city are named after slave owners. And generally, people have done terrible things in our past. And I think it's time that we rethink it and think about who we are as a city and as a liberal bastion in western North Carolina and a city that cares about our black and brown residents. We need to remove these monuments immediately. Um, I look forward to your answer on that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Miranda Norland. I'm a Buncombe County resident and have been since I was three years old. I live outside of Weaverville. And I am calling in regards to the joint resolution with the Asheville City Council um, to remove Confederate monuments from downtown, including the Vance Monument. And I'm calling in favor of that action. I believe that Asheville City and the Buncombe County uh, Board of Commission need to need to work swiftly and decisively to remove these monuments from our public lands. Um, Confederate monuments were not erected for the sake of history. They were erected to remind black and brown people in our area that white people are still the ones with power and that that's not changing. So, this is, this is the beginning of making deeper change, but it is, I believe, an essential step that both the smaller Confederate monuments and the Vance Monument are removed soon. Thank you. Bye.
Sarah Deva from Buncombe County, North Carolina. And I'm calling about the Vance Monument. Um, I expect you to vote this evening to remove the Vance Monument in entirety from the center of Asheville. Vance is not only a disgusting representation of white supremacy and its constant presence, actually literally centralness in our city and lives, but it's a harmful continuation of glorifying the work of people who are unconscionable in their actions, belief structures, and the oppressive systems that they have hand in creating. There is no repurposing of this monument. I want to be clear. It belongs at the bottom of the river along with statues of the Confederacy all around the country. Have a good day.
Hello, my name is Sarah Ellen Heck. I'm a resident of Buncombe County and Asheville, the city of Asheville. I was calling in regarding regards to the removal of the Vance Monument. I think that it really needs to be done. I think it represents a time in our country's history when we were the most divided and we're breaching on that time as now. And we need to move forward and support images and statements and monuments that are meant to unite our country, not divide them further. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Morris. I live in Monford in Asheville. And I'm calling to ask that we take down any racist monuments that people in our town uh, feel uncomfortable when they see those. I don't want people of color to feel uncomfortable in our town. Um, I believe that the Vance Monument should be moved to Vance Birthplace and that way anyone who wants to honor it can go there to honor it and people who are offended by it don't have to look at it in our town square anymore. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Steinhoff and I am a resident of West Asheville in Buncombe County. I'm calling in regards to the motion to remove the Vance Monument statue from Van- uh, from Pack Square. I would like to state that I am adamantly for the removal of Vance Monument as well as any monument or any symbol in our city that represents a microaggression towards black people and indigenous people and people of color and anybody that looks at those statues and fears for their safety. Um, I am for the removal of Vance Monument, not the repurposing of it. And I would like to see this matter settled swiftly as well as other matters, including defunding the police and funding social services, as well as a freeze of the four-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, as well as a further look into the grander budget of the Police Department. I believe that most of the things that can be done by the police concurrently and better served, be better, be better done by social services. And we should be putting our money into education, early childhood education, drug counseling, other types of counseling. But most importantly, and for this in, this specifically, I believe that Vance Monument should be removed. Thank you for your time.
Hello, this is Tim Prokesh. I live in West Asheville on one sixty-four School Road and I'm a community member here in in Asheville, North Carolina. I'm calling um, to to uh, leave public comment for uh, the upcoming council meeting at um, on today. And I'd like to say that I am in support of removing any Confederate monuments and especially removing the Vance Monument. And Asheville, I believe, needs to separate itself from its racist and slavery roots that are still on display in the city. And the monuments, I think, it's time for them to go. Just to um, I'm in support of Councilman Keith Young who said these monuments were erected to remind black men and women that whites still have power. They still have control. The arguments that say the Confederate flag or statues or monuments represent heritage not hate ignores the near universal heritage of African Americans. I support Keith Young and I hope all the other council members will adopt or support this point of view and perspective. And I hope you all make the right choice and support people and make efforts to change the city to help people who have been oppressed for centuries. And this needs to end. Thank you. Bye.
Cheryl Glenn, Vanderbilt Road in Asheville. I'm calling to urge the Commissioners to take down the Confederate statues. We are too divided and it's time to move forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Paxton and I live in Asheville, two-eight-eight oh-one. And I am calling about taking down or renaming or reestablishing the Vance Monument. I feel it's very important that we stand in solidarity with our black and brown people of color in this city and in this global world. Um, to stand up and as white people and make sure that their voices are heard in a time where they have been oppressed for four hundred years. So, thank you so much for taking my comment and I hope that you side with me and we change the Vance Monument or take it down. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Daniel Maltz and I'm calling um, about the agenda item about removing Confederate monuments and the Vance Monument. And I'm definitely calling in favor of removing those monuments. Uh, for too long in the city, we've had monuments up to slaveholders and racists and it's time to change the narrative and honor our history of uh, people in the black and brown community. And just kind of rededicate that space to a space of freedom and inclusion and art and beauty. So, yeah, definitely it's way past time for those monuments to come down and for something more beautiful and inclusive to take their space. Thank you.
My name is Chuck Wittenberger. I live at fifty-six Marlowe Drive, uh, two-eight-eight and zero-one in Asheville. I'm urging the Buncombe County Commissioners to vote in favor of removing all Confederate statues. Um, I mean, the reasons are pretty obvious. Uh, I'm not a person of color, but I can only imagine the horror of a person of color walking by that statue every day and knowing what that represents. Uh, knowing, you know, even somebody that's not complicitly uh, associated with the Confederacy, uh, even somebody that owned slaves. Uh, it, I just couldn't even imagine being, being a black person in this town and walking by that every day. It just must be horrific. Um, please, please vote to remove these. Thank you so much.
Hello, this is Eileen Commerford. I'm a resident of Asheville and I'm just calling to urge Commissioners to vote to remove the Confederate monuments in Pack Square and remove the Vance Monument. Um, because I don't think these are good symbols of what Buncombe County is about. And I don't think we should have monuments that support or memorialize racism and slavery. Thank you. Goodbye.
Hi there. My name is Emily Hoxma. I am calling from Asheville, North Carolina, which is my hometown. Feel very connected to this place. And I am calling in regards to y'all's vote on Tuesday, June sixteenth, to remove the Confederate monuments in Pack Square and remove or repurpose the Vance Monument. I feel like this is a no-brainer. I honestly can't believe it's still a conversation. Um, anyone who states that these monuments represent heritage and not hate don't have a firm grasp on history because the Confederacy literally only lasted for five years. These monuments are a statement about white power. They um, were erected literally to remind black folks that white people still have control of society, which is what we are actively trying to dismantle. And what, to my understanding, council is also working in conjunction with the citizens of North Asheville, North Carolina to dismantle as well. So, seriously, um, there is no reason not to remove these monuments. I would also recommend removing instead of repurposing the Vance Monument. It's an obelisk that's also related to a lot of patriarchal uh, shit that we don't necessarily need in our main square of our town. Um, so, yeah, thank you so much for your time. I hope that you listen to these comments closely and um, I know there will be a lot of them. So, good luck.
All right, are we, okay. So, thank you. That's uh, that was about thirty minutes of the um, uh, the, uh, listening to the public comments that were submitted via voicemails. Uh, it's just um, small sampling of them. We received about two-hundred-and-fifty such comments. So, um, but uh, thank you, Max, for sharing those. We're now gonna review written comments that were submitted on this agenda item. And we're gonna, we're gonna do that for about thirty minutes as well. We agreed um, unanimously as a commission to take public comments for about an hour. So, um, and um, I believe our library director's gonna help us out with this. If you, if your voice gets worn out after at some point, feel free to tag somebody else and uh, and and, but we appreciate you helping us out on this. First comment, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, is from Ben Kickert from District Two. "As a Buncombe County resident, I'm writing to express my support for the passage of the joint resolution concerning Confederate monuments in our community. These are not only symbols of treason, which should be rejected by all Americans, but more significantly are symbols of intimidation, oppression, and racism. The removal of the monuments owned by the UDC should occur immediately. Recognize the complexities surrounding the Vance Monument and understand and appreciate the path of removal, relocation, or repurposing is not as clear. I urge the commission to expedite the process of listening and responding to the community leaders most agreed by the symbolism of the monument. This is not something that can be allowed to linger in bureaucracy, hoping that local outrage will subside. Personally, I feel it appropriate to dismantle the monument and have its pieces rebuilt into something that represents the diversity of the community and the contributions of minorities. However, as a person who has undoubtedly benefited from the lingering effects of slavery and the systemic oppression of black people throughout history, I fully yield to the desires of those more qualified to speak on the topic from their experiences. It's clear Vance Monument cannot be allowed to stand as a symbol of honor to a man who actively fought for the subjugation of people of color. The idea that black lives matter isn't only a truth that should be self-evident to all, it's the minimum. Black voices must be heard. Black experiences must be shared and understood. Black leaders must be honored and followed. Black injustices must be answered for and rectified. We're in a liminal period where positive change isn't only possible, it's essential. The Buncombe County Commission has the ability to start that process with the passage of this resolution, but this too is just the minimum. Systematic change must be sought that ensures equality to all and provides protections that allow black, indigenous, minority, and people of color to enjoy life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, an ideal that has been withheld for far too long." Next comment from an anonymous citizen. "Modify Vance Monument's purpose. Suggestion to modify is opposed to remove the Vance Monument. It should be feasible to change the purpose slash message of the beautiful historic structure instead of destroying it. Below is just a simple idea to have a short history of Asheville on the monument instead. Established on a plateau where two old Indians, Indian trails crossed. In seventeen ninety-seven, Moorestown was incorporated and renamed Asheville after North Carolina Governor Samuel Ash." Next comment from an anonymous citizen from the city of Asheville. "Please do not remove the monuments. That is part of our history." Next comment, anonymous citizen of Buncombe County. "I don't think we should remove the monuments. It is a part of our history and removing them leads us down a bad road. We need to have the mon- We need to have the monuments as a reminder of history and a road we do not want to travel again. Next comment from Michael Beach of Asheville. I support removing Confederate monuments, building name, street names and parks. These represent honoring sedition, terrorism, and the glorification of traitors. They support slavery, physical, medical, and emotional abuse. These support killing, rape, and assault of humans. In addition, they were placed for long after the Civil War as a Jim Crow warning to black citizens, remove them now. Next comment to Kira Rose from Buncombe County. I'm a voter in both Asheville and Buncombe County elections. I am writing today to urge all Buncombe County commissioners to vote in favor of the resolution to remove Confederate monuments and consider opinion, excuse me, options for removing Vance Monument safely. As someone developing a career in the field of heritage interpretation, I believe this is not only wise and, I believe this is the only wise and ethical way forward. Historic preservation is not merely an intellectual concept, it is a community choice that should be used responsibly. Any historian with integrity will tell you preservation is important for remembering the past, but also will recognize that it is often weaponized to uphold historical narratives, valorizing dominant cultures while erasing the stories of others, or to silence competing community visions in the name of shared heritage, nostalgia, or education. Vote to right past wrongs. Removing monuments is not removing history. History doesn't go anywhere, but people, culture, and values do change and the story continues to unfold. Historians will document and capture information about this time too. In a hundred years, people will be able to learn both the story of these monuments and the histories and people they glorify, whether they come down or not, as well as the lessons from the aftermath of this moment. History is a living thing, while the past can't be changed, its power lies in how its lessons inform our future. I hope this era will get more people to reflect on history in a thoughtful manner and recognize that historical education is deeper than a statue on a street corner. Look beyond our home. Other monuments are being taken down across this country in various ways, sometimes quietly in the night by local governments, sometimes with large ceremonies decrying the Confederate cause, sometimes directly by crowds of tired of waiting endlessly for governments to take action. You're faced not with the choice of whether to remove these monuments, but what kind of removal you want to see and what kind of voice you want to have in that process. Vote to remove them safely. Next comment from Andrew Selwyn. Thank you for taking up this measure to remove some hurtful monuments that should not have a place of prominence in our community. While I don't want to erase our past, I feel that putting the monuments in the proper context and the proper place will be an important symbolic gesture to start us on a path to heal some old wounds. I can appreciate that you will be hearing from others who don't want them moved. Just the fact that they have been here for, for some time is no justification for keeping them as they are. The lack of inertia, will, and desire to remove them previously doesn't mean they shouldn't, they still shouldn't be removed. There is no wrong time to do the right thing. My store downtown on Market Street is just a stone's throw away from these monuments. While I'm tired of all the construction downtown that makes it hard for both local and visiting customers to reach me, any construction to remove these monuments and replace them with something better will be well worth it. Thank you for working with the city of Asheville to make this happen. It is always a welcome sign when our local governments work together. Next comment. Julia Sanders. I am writing today as a citizen of Asheville to demand that the removal of all, demand the removal of all Confederate monuments and streets named after Confederate leaders and slaveholders, including but not limited to the Vance Monument, Robert E. Lee Dixie Highway, and Colonel John Connally Marker. These are traumatic reminders of white supremacy and need to be removed immediately. I urge city council to connect with black artists as well as indigenous artists to create new monuments and street names that celebrate and honor the Asheville we want to be. Thank you. Amanda Dirst of West Asheville. I'm writing today to voice my strong support for the resolution concerning Confederate monuments in our city. It is long past time to remove these monuments to hate and injustice. I also want to emphasize the fact that the removal of these monuments is just the starting point of reparations to our city's black community. The removal of the monuments, including the Isore in Pack Square, is just one of many demands the black community has voiced. Black Ashvillians deserve more than what the city has given them and removing monuments is the bare minimum we can do to begin to atone for hundreds of years of slavery, ongoing police brutality, redlining, and gentrification. Black Asheville is Asheville, more so than tourists and hotels. Thank you for your time. Uh, next comment from Hallam Dickens of Asheville. Please remove these memorials to white supremacy. These racist traitor monuments do not represent who we are as a country or a community. They should be placed in a museum or on private property, not propped up and memorialized in our public spaces. The community consensus is that these should not stand and the city is in no position to protect these statues over our protests. We, the citizens of Buncombe County, do not consent for these racist monuments to remain in public spaces any longer. Take them down or we will. Next comment, Jennifer Sanders. I'm writing to request that the city vote to remove all Confederate monuments, especially the Vance Monument. Vance was an architect of the early Democratic Party in North Carolina. This party was known primarily for its goal to exclude black voters. They are responsible for some of the earliest forms of voter suppression. Vance's appointment as governor and then in the senate led to the formation of the Red Shirts, a militant arm of the Democratic Party, and eventually to the Wilmington massacre of eighteen ninety-eight. He also tried to suppress the vote of poor white men by having a land requirement. And no way, and no way do Vance's morals reflect the current morals of our city, I hope. We need to demonstrate this by removing the monument from the center of town or repurposing it into something that celebrates the descendants of those slaves that were sold in that very area. Thank you. Bob Ballard of Asheville, Buncombe County. I strongly support the removal of Confederate monuments and symbols from all county property. Please unanimously adopt the joint resolution on Confederate monuments before you to send a clear message of support. Now is the time to act. Most of the monuments to the Confederacy in cities and towns across the South were erected decades after that war in an attempt to rewrite history. The lost cause and the resulting flood of monuments and statues erected were a major disinformation campaign designed to enforce the institutional supremacy of some people over others based on the color of their skin. The monuments still standing, including the ones in Asheville, serve as a painful reminder to the black Americans of the legacy of slavery and the ongoing white supremacy and privilege which our country still grapples with. These monuments have no business on public lands. I understand that there may be legal issues surrounding the removal of these monuments, including issues of ownership and guardianship. Now is the time to resolve these issues and remove these monuments. I look forward to the task force recommendations for how to remove slash repurpose the grounds where Vance Memorial currently stands today. Cities including Richmond, Virginia, the former capital of the Confederacy, are removing statues to Confederates. It's time for Asheville and Buncombe County to do the same. Taking down Confederate monuments is not erasing history, erasing history happened when the monuments were erected. Let's fix this now. Thank you. Sandra Houts of Asheville. I am writing in support of the city-county resolution as published by the city of Asheville recently in which removal and/or repurposing monuments on city and county property be What to do with the Vance Monument is to me the, the greatest concern. While I do not support its current dedication, I do see it as a landmark, an integral part of downtown Asheville. I would like to see it remain but with Vance removed and replaced by names of all the African-American artisans, builders, business owners who are instrumental in making downtown the block the tourist destination that it is today. If the whites need to be appeased, maybe the names of the likes of Grove, Vanderbilt, Architects, et cetera, could be inscribed also. Or gee, maybe the names could be integrated. I'm not being flippant. Thank you. Chris Musio of Asheville, Buncombe County. I have lived here for over seven years. I'm writing this email in support of bringing down the racist monuments that reside in my city. These statues serve as a firm reminder that racism is not only still alive and well within our communities, but is accepted by the local government. I believe that history is extremely important, as those who don't listen are doomed to repeat it. However, this should be taught by books in an educational setting, not glorified for all to see as the centerpiece, centerpiece in our great city. For those who oppose taking down the monuments to preserve history, I submit to you this. First, a reminder that the Confederacy only lasted for five years and was based on the premise that white men could own black men as slaves. This is not several generations of history we're talking about here. Second, these men were traitors to the United States of America. Third, these monuments were not built in the wake of the Civil War, they were, they were built later, to remind African-Americans that they were not equal. Finally, I submit you a reminder that on July ninth, seventeen seventy-six, New Yorkers tore down the statue of George the Third due to his tyranny. History was not destroyed that day, history was made. The American people took a stance for freedom and equality. This is what we should be doing today. Thank you for your time. This is from multiple, um, submissions. Christopher Barnes of Buncombe County, Rebecca Rose of Buncombe County, Sean Jones of Buncombe County, Amy DeCamp of Buncombe County, and Drew Stevenson of West Asheville. I strongly support the removal of Confederate monuments and symbols from all county property, which is why I ask that you unanimously adopt the joint resolution on Confederate monuments before you today. I know this issue has come up in the past and is likely to spark some controversy, however, now is the time to act. We know through the study of history that many monuments to the Confederacy in cities and towns across the South were erected not in the immediate post-war period, but decades later in attempts to reinforce institutional supremacy of whites and the lost cause narrative around the American Civil War. These monuments serve to glorify a past many of us now are rightly ashamed of. They serve as a painful reminder to black Americans of the legacy of slavery and white supremacy our country still grapples with to this day. They have no business on public lands. I look forward to the task force recommendations for how to remove and repurpose the grounds where Vance Memorial currently stands today. Cities including Richmond, Virginia, the former capital of the Confederacy, are removing statues to Confederates. It's time for Asheville and Buncombe County to do the same. Thank you for your time. Next, Tracy Jacobson from Asheville. Greetings from Bocatcher Mountain. I'm writing to express my hope that you will take steps to remove monuments to the Confederacy in our country, as is being done elsewhere throughout the South. These monuments are not about remembering history as some claim. They're about glorifying individuals who were traitors to the United States and built their argument for secession on the basis of their desire to see the reprehensible practice of slavery maintained. If you haven't read the Articles of Secession recently, I urge that you do so. The creators of the Confederacy were very clear about what they wanted and to glorify these racists as well as those who fought against the United States on their behalf is offensive to any person who believes that all men are created equal, should be understood today to mean man and women of all races. The creators and defenders of the Confederacy certainly belong in our history books, but not on pedestals. Sandra Goodson. This should not even be a question. The monument glorifies a part of Asheville's history that we should all be ashamed of. Rich white men have had their day. It is time to put that era, era to bed in support of all of our citizens and visitors. Katie Bullu. Remove Vance Monument, take it down, please. Kay Kelly of Asheville. Dear City Council, I'm going to make this direct and concise. I believe symbols have a lot of power and that the statues and art we put in public space represent collective values. I think ours should really celebrate our diversity and resilience. This can, this can take account and honor history as well, but that history should be redemptive and inclusive. Our symbols should not cause pain and suffering to our citizens, they should inspire community. It's time for change. Please replace those statues and please use a democratic process to decide what will replace them. Kathy Cleary. I want you to support the removal of Confederate monuments in Pack Square and remove or repurpose the Vance Monument. These monuments do not represent history and heritage in a positive way for African-American people. These public monuments need to be removed so we can start the process of reconciling with our history of oppression in this country. Please vote to remove and/or repurpose. Sarah Diva. I expect you to vote this evening to remove, to remove the Vance Monument in its entirety from the center of Asheville. Vance is not only a disgusting representation of white supremacy and its constant presence, actually literal centralness in our city and lives, but it's a harmful continuation of glorifying the work of people who were unconscionable in their actions, belief structures, and the oppressive systems they had a hand in creating. There is no repurposing of this monument. It belongs in the bottom of the river, along with the statues of the Confederacy all around the country. Amy Worthen. Our community must make a clear statement that we truly value black, our black neighbors and therefore we will no longer tolerate having a monument to an enslaver in the center of Asheville. Remove the Vance Monument as soon as possible. Linda Wolf of Candler. I urge you to remove all Confederate monuments, plaques, and signs from our public spaces as quickly as possible. Shannon Waldman. Taxpayer dollars currently fund the maintenance of the Vance Monument, a symbol of racism. Contemporary funds should support humanitarian values. Funding this work inherently cannot support the contemporary value of racial equity. Excuse me. Removing the work or allowing the city commission to work with this symbol will not be enough. I encourage you to be paired with other civic actions on the commission and city's part, such as defunding the APD to finance actions that more sustainably support black Asheville. Carmen Yubara. I am writing to urge you to please vote in favor of removing all monuments in our county that memorialize and honor the Confederacy. Now is the time you can take action in support of our community. Now is the time to move forward in a positive direction. It is time to remove these concrete reminders of our darkest legacy. These are not symbols of our heritage or history. Anyone who thinks otherwise is not considering the voice of the oppressed. This is one small step you can take to honor the wishes of those who have been unheard for so long. Maggie Friedline. These monuments were erected to remind black men and women that whites still have power, they still have control. The arguments that say the Confederate flag or statues or monuments represent heritage not hate ignores the near universal heritage of African-Americans. It is time to take action and remove these monuments. Stephanie West. I'm writing to express that as a citizen of Asheville, I am tired of looking at monuments that glorify our racist history. Asheville is better than this. We need to show solidarity with the black community in this town and to take down the statues that are a daily reminder of a, of a gross history of oppression. Please consider the perspectives of black Asheville residents when making the decision tomorrow. It's time for a change, it's time to be on the right side of history. Greg Walker Wilson. Please remove the two Confederate monuments on city-county property and remove or repurpose the Vance Monument. They are from a racist time that we don't need to celebrate. Rosetta Star Buon. The citizens of this city are demanding action and thought this is symbolic, and though this is symbolic, it is a large, leming, vivid symbol. We want community healing, a dialogue, we want police accountability and a focusing of efforts and funds. We just won't tolerate overt brutality or racist symbols any longer. We know we're collectively better than this. Kim McGuire. As a Buncombe County resident, I request that you proceed urgently with removal of Confederate monuments, including the Vance Memorial, in our community. This is an important and powerful step to address the systemic racism that continues to harm people and impede progress and opportunity locally and beyond. Thank you for taking action on this timely and critically important matter. Susannah Harmon. The Vance Memorial has stood for one hundred and twenty-three years now. It was erected to honor a Confederate soldier, politician, and slave owner, erected to the tune of Dixie. Excuse me. Yes, this phallic stone construction is a hallmark of Asheville, but I think it's run its course. It's a black mark of history. Let's take it down, be inclusive, and stand for something greater and better. Be a true Asheville community, not just one that caters to tourists and economy. Lay it on its side somewhere else or do something more constructive with it. Let's move on, shall we? Kristy Shelton. I'd like to request that you remove all racist monuments in Buncombe County. It's time to move past this era of racism and towards equality and inclusion. Emily Notchell. I'm writing today in support of removing the Confederate monuments in Pack Square and to remove or repurpose the Vance Monument. To quote Councilman Keith Young from last week's Asheville City Council meeting, "The monuments were erected to remind black men and women that whites still have power, they still have control." The arguments that say Confederate, the Confederate flag or statues or monuments represent heritage not hate ignores the near universal heritage of African-Americans. And then a, a web address follows, https, um, en.wikipedia.org, wiki/zeblonbairdVance. Does this man seem like an individual who deserves a monument erected in his honor? Follow Richmond's lead and so many other cities, remove these offensive monuments. Ella Thomas. Please consider this request that all Confederate monuments be removed from the Asheville area. I do not support memorializing the members of the Confederate Army considering their blatant desire to retain slavery in America. I hope as an Asheville native, you will add my voice to the thousands of others who agree. Paul Garrity. I am a resident of Black Mountain and I work in Asheville. I endorse the removal of Confederate monuments and the repurposing or removal of the Vance Monument in Nashville. These monuments perpetuate a false narrative of US history and should be removed. Maura Hartsman. You know what our country is doing to move to enter an actual state of equity. You know many of us are in the streets voicing our need to do better, hold each community to higher standards, and to represent the people we serve. We demand these statues of racist symbolism be taken, to be taken down. They need to not be the centerpieces of Asheville, the center area where slaves were once sold. We need to remove these blatant representations of Asheville and instead being, instead of being quietly racist, we need to be vocally anti-racist. Asheville officials want to quietly remove these, we need to vocally replace them to remember those who were slaves here, replace them with statues that reflect the community we have been quietly silencing in Asheville. To replace these statues of a racist yesterday, we can create art pieces that represent the equality we represent today. As a citizen of Asheville, I want to see representation of people who live here today. Please allow black leaders of Asheville- Please allow Black leaders of Asheville to work with artists to replace racism with community representation. Sean Bryson. All Confederate monuments should be removed from all locations in Asheville and the US. Abigail Clarkson of Arden. I'm writing to ask you to remove the Confederate and Vance monuments from downtown Asheville. Doing so would show Buncombe County's commitment to the dignity of our Black brothers and sisters and remove symbols that glorify slavery and slave owners. Diane Worley. I am writing to respectfully request that you consider removing, repurposing the Vance Monument. I am an Asheville native, having grown up in the shadow of the monument. As soon as I was old enough to realize the connection between it and the ownership of humans, I was dismayed and hurt. Now is the time to start repairing the damage done to Black people over the last 400 years. If some want the monument preserved, removing it from a place of prominence and honor should be considered. As it stands now, it is a lightning rod for anguish, black and white. Thank you for reading my plea for justice. Robin Sanchez. I'm writing to express my strong desire to see the Confederate monuments removed. Let us not ignore the truth that these monuments were purposefully erected to remind Black men and women that whites still have power and control. The hollow argument that asserts the Confederate flag and these statues and monuments represent heritage not hate ignores the complete and factual history about the near universal heritage of African-Americans. I want to see these reminders of a shameful past and equally shameful symbols of continuing support for racist ideology removed. Kristen Winstead. I'm an Asheville resident and writing to ask that you vote to remove or repurpose the Confederate monuments in downtown Asheville. Nava Lubelski. Please vote to remove all Confederate and racist monuments, including destruction or removal of the Vance Monument and replace with something determined in communication with Black community leaders. Miranda Norland of Buncombe County. I'm writing to express my strong support for the removal of all Buncombe County Confederate monuments, but specifically those named in the joint resolution with the Asheville City Council. I believe that both of the smaller monuments should be removed ASAP. Honestly, the 30-60 day courtesy with the Daughters of the Confederacy is unnecessary and that, given many people in our community have been calling for the removal of the Vance Monument for years, that that process should commence as quickly as possible, also with a task force of predominantly Black leaders from our area to determine what should replace it. Confederate monuments were not put in place as a way to remember history. They are there as a part of a concerted effort to remind Black people in our area that white supremacy still reigns. While removing them is an important first step, I ask that you consider this as an action that pledges deeper systemic change and a radical reimagining of our community. You are blessed with power in a moment when clear calls are showing you how to take a firm and impactful stand on the right side of history. Seize this moment or expect to be removed from office. Wendy Murphy of Asheville. I never paid much attention to Confederate monuments being originally from the North, nor to the Confederate flag. I served in the US Navy when I was a young, when I was young and was always proud to be of service to my country and fly the flag. I've enjoyed white privilege for 65 years and was sheltered from understanding racism while working for 32 years at a company that truly supported equal rights. I've lived here for just over eight years and retired here. I've been silent too long, as well as ignorant of the realities of the lives of people of color. If removing such monuments helps spread understanding and peace, and I am all for it. My taxes doubled the year before last and I wish no longer to be in the silent majority. Please let my voice be heard. Thank you. Patrick Casale. The Vance Monument needs to be removed. This shouldn't even be an issue or debate at this point. If Asheville is truly an inclusive, safe space for, uh, people of color, then we need to show it through action and not just talking about it. Ernie Boyd of Asheville. I support fully the removal of the Vance Monument and two other downtown commemorations of the Confederacy. I grew up in Waynesville, North Carolina and moved back to the mountains in 97. I've lived in Monford since 2008. My maternal grandfather was a member of the Klan in his youth. He was dead by the time I was born, but the family lore was that he viewed Klan, his Klan membership as the worst mistake of his life. His widow, my grandmother barred her younger brother from her home for using the N-word. This all seems like an awfully long time ago, but the monuments still stand and is well past time for them to come down along with the structures of racism they support. Contextualization is not a satisfactory option. Removal is what we need. A small plaque announcing that African people were sold on the site would do just fine as a replacement. Federica Colina. I'm a resident of Asheville and I strongly believe that Confederate monuments in Asheville should be removed. The Vance Monument in Pac Square should be removed and not repurposed. Justine and Jake Wickerham. We would like to put our two, in our two cents regarding the potential removal of the Vance Monument in downtown Asheville. While we can't speak to any other potential Confederate monuments in Nashville that may be historically insensitive or fracturing to our inclusive community, we would like to see the Vance Monument renamed rather than removed. We feel that as the Vance Monument doesn't depict a specific likeness, there is potential to preserve the architectural integrity and a history of the structure with a new intention and meaning tied to it. Stephen Barnard. These monuments to racism and treason need to come down, including Vance. Vote for our better angels and the right side of history. Sarah White. I'm a resident of Weaverville who frequents Asheville and brings company to see it. It is time for the Vance Monument to come down. It currently serves to honor the history of secession, slavery, slavery and the Jim Crow era. It is time for Asheville to embrace a more inclusive vision and to no longer offer a place of honor to a symbol of white supremacy and the dehumanization of others. Stephanie Gold. I'm writing in support of removing racist monuments in Asheville. I am a lifelong resident of WNC. My grandmother went to Claxton Elementary. My family stretches out over WNC. Asheville calls itself diverse, inclusive, and community-driven. If we want to create this legacy, we must be intentional in creating a community where everyone feels safe, seen, and served. We need to tear them down and rebuild our city in this light. Angela M. Stone. As a deep descendant of both Buncombe and Madison Counties, time for them to come down. I'm not even sure repurposing would be enough. They went up during Jim Crow to intimidate people of color. It's time to take them down and show that the South has learned from its traitorous and racist mistakes. They should never have been put up. Even Robert E. Lee knew that to be true. Lee said it was wiser not to keep open the sores of war, but to follow the examples of those nations who endeavored to obliterate the marks of civil strife. Time to start to heal these wounds. I do believe both the African-American and Jewish communities in Asheville should lead in this decision. Liza Kelly, Asheville residence since 2011. I would like to voice my strong support of removal of the Confederate monuments in Nashville. I thank you for considering the trauma these statues inflict on people of color and I urge you to consider their prompt removal. Chancy Rogers. It's important to remove these statues, reminders to people of color that the white man once believed they had power over them. We need to address how racist and offensive they are to keep, to keep this history when in actuality it's a reminder of hate, racism, and a lost war.
Can we do a time check, Mr. Joyner?
Actually, I believe that's the last one. These are actually about something separate, so that's all of them.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Great job reading all that. All right. Commissioners, um, comes back to us. Um, there's been a motion in a second on the resolution. So I would ask for further deliberation on the issue.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Jasmine. I'll just speak briefly to express my support for the resolution. For years and years, I've been hearing from people across Buncombe County, especially from Black people, uh, that are calling for the monuments to be removed. And, you know, in, in some ways monuments are a symbol, but these are, uh, public symbols that sit on public land and send a really clear message about, uh, what our values are as a community. So, um, I hear very clearly the call to remove them. I, um, personally support the removal of all three monuments as quickly as possible, but also look forward to hearing from a, a community task force to make a final and clear decision from a community perspective about, um, whether Vance would be removed or repurposed. We've heard a lot of public comment to the effect and the resolution itself addresses the very painful history surrounding the era, the Jim Crow era in which these monuments, um, were actually installed across the South. We are near, about 100 years later, in fact, living through a time when these monuments are coming down across the South. In North Carolina, monuments have been removed in Chapel Hill, in Durham, and Winston-Salem. Just today, a monument was removed in Raleigh. Pitt County Commissioners voted to remove a monument from in front of their courthouse last night and the city of Rocky Mountain has also voted to immediately remove a monument and store it. Beyond the borders of North Carolina, we've seen Richmond, the former, uh, capital of Confederacy, taking action to remove their monument. Birmingham, Alabama, New Orleans, and other communities, um, doing this. I think it, um, speaks to the moment we're in, which, as difficult as it may be, is a moment that I think also makes me hopeful. Largely because of what my faith teaches me about struggle and about the, um, the, the, the difficult passages we often have to go through before we come out, into a brighter light and a, and a, and hopefully a period, at, at some point, a period of redemption for our, our country. We talk a lot about children and, and I think there's a really deeply shared passion for the, uh, well-being of children on this commission. And for me, what I always think of first is a young Black child walking through downtown Asheville and the message that is communicated to them about the, the town and county they call home when they see these monuments. And I think about the message we could be communicating, uh, by removing them, but, but more than that by replacing them. I also think about people who walk through the doors of our courthouse and the, uh, message that's sent to them as they sort of enter, um, the halls of justice in our community and the message that people should be receiving. So there, there are many more reasons that I support this, but, um, those are the, the top of the list. And I hope we can get to a unanimous vote on this because of the message it will send our community to a unanimous vote from city council, a message that we are ready to turn the page, that we are ready to heal, that we are ready to stand shoulder to shoulder in this work. And perhaps above all, that we are ready to do more than remove monuments and replace them. We're ready to tackle the really critical policy questions, um, that get to the structural inequities that haunt our community, um, and that simply don't need to. That's change we can create and I look forward to working with community members, um, and other elected officials, as we figure out a path forward that, that truly, um, addresses racism and the disparities we know exist. Thank you.
You know, as I sit here tonight, I think back 60 years ago or more when I was a freshman at Morehouse College in Atlanta. And it was a group of boys out in front of Graves Hall where the freshmen stayed. And a young man passed by who was a lecturer there. He would lecture some. He was a minister. And he told us in a conversation, we had a good one, and knowing me, I got in an argument with him because I questioned what he was saying. But he told us, he said, "Young men, you will be fighting for inclusion for all of your lives." And at that time, several of us, you know, we sort of shrugged and laughed and thought about it, but many times since then, I've thought of what he said. And by the way, that young man was Martin Luther King Jr. And I've seen all my life, you know, I hear people say they have been here 70 years or whatever. I've been here five years more than that. But I've had to watch these monuments from the time I was 15 years old boycotting in A-school. I knew it was wrong then, but later on, as I went to college, I was fortunate enough to have one of the top historians of our time, Dr. John Hope Franklin. And I learned so much from one class that I took from him and talking about American history. And when I saw what happened during the Civil War period and when I look back from the beginning, one of the questions that I had then as a young African-American kid, a young man, was why in the heck have we been left out of our history? And when we come forward today, I still ask that question. You know, it's almost like we've been invisible people. But I'm glad to see that finally here now, we're beginning to have this conversation. And I will vote for this tonight because I think it's a start. But Commissioners, it's only the beginning. We've got so much more to do in housing, healthcare. This pandemic has really pointed out what is happening to people in America today who don't have the means or people whose color is not white, people who are black and brown. And when, and when I say don't have the means, that's poor people regardless in this country. What color you are, if you're poor, you're in trouble. But we have got to start. And one of the things I'll end by saying is this, you know, I've got a 23-year-old grandson who just finished college. I've got another 21, uh, no, 22, and then I have another one coming along at 13 who will start high school. But one of the things, and I hope, I think several of us here have grandkids. And what we've got to stop doing is passing that 800-pound gorilla down from generation to generation. And by that, I mean racism. And if we don't think we have it in America, look at what's happening now. Look at the three lives that have been lost. We can't even count the number in the past that were lost. But finally, we've got to deal with it. It's going to be some uncomfortable conversations, but we've got to have them. And we've got to make the changes that are needed and it's going to take all of us marching together to do it. We're in this, Dr. King always, he, I heard him say too, and you've probably read it. You know, we all came to America on different boats, but we're in the same boat now. And that's so true. But, you know, when I vote, uh, I'm sort of like Keith Young. He said he was voting for his grandfather. I'm not voting for my grandfather. I'm voting for all my ancestors who died to make this country the great country it is today. And think about all the people, the slaves who gave, who worked to build this country and they weren't paid a dime. The many inventions that they made, and I can go on and on, but I won't. And they didn't get, they didn't got nothing for it. But the least we can do, and when we talk about reparations, you couldn't pay African-Americans. It's no way. America doesn't have enough money for it. But what we could do for reparations is finally, let's do the right thing. And this is, I think, a way we can do it here in Buncombe County. And let our people know that we do care about you and you are a part of America. You know, I look forward to the day when I'm not called African-American, but I'm called an American, that all of us are. And I hope my grandkids and great-grandkids will reach that point. But until we get there, we have a ways to go, folks. But we've got to start. And we can't bury our heads in the sand thinking that things are going to stay the way they are because the young people all over this country today are telling us it's time for a change. And they're not going to accept the 800-pound gorilla. They're telling us, let it die with you. We don't want it. But we've got to change. And this is just a small way of beginning, but it's a start and we've got to do it. And I agree. I hope all of us can vote for this. I mean, this is something as a community we need. And the people who don't understand, I pray for them. I hope at some point in time, they will understand it. But I can tell you, until you walk in my shoes, you don't know what I've had to go and millions like me, what we've had to go through and what we've had to take. And you reach a point where it's just like, you know, what off of a fish back? You just, you learn to just ignore it. But it takes its toll. And I've seen people become relatives of mine alcoholic, have mental problems simply because what they have gone through over the years with racism and what they have encountered. But at least we can do a start and take. And when I hear a lot of the comments and what people say, I wish they could walk in my shoes or they had walked in my shoes. Some of them would have prob- or "they had walked in my shoes," some of them would have probably put a gun to their head years ago. They couldn't take it, oppression. But that's all part of it, and that's what I've had to go through during my life in America. But I'm not giving up on this country. I hope that before I leave here, that I will see some changes, some real changes and not cosmetic changes. We fought in the '60s. I was arrested and sit-ins and all. But folks, we should not be having these comments today, these same conversations today. We should be a lot farther ahead. But since we aren't, we've got to start. And we owe it to the generations who follow us to do the right thing. Sure, it might be painful for some people, but it's going to be that way. But we've got to get there, and it's already been painful for a lot of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Any other commissioners want to make any comments before we proceed?
Yeah. Two weeks ago, I got a phone call from Sheriff Miller, who asked me if I'd be willing to come to the table to discuss the issues that are going on, truly discuss. In a time when we need to come together, in a time when we need to sit down and have meaningful conversation. I love this country. Commissioner Whitesides, sir, I haven't walked in your shoes. And I hope that one day, that we can do what it says in Genesis 127 that says we are all created in God's image, all of us. What's going on in this country is horrible. It is horrible. But at 7:56 last Tuesday morning, we get a letter, email, saying that a discussion had been had with the mayor of Asheville about the possibility of looking at the monuments. And then it said that Commissioner Farrar, Commissioner Edwards, and Commissioner Whitesides was on board. My question to you, in a time when we should be together, was it any more time-consuming to allow Commissioner Belcher, Commissioner Presley, and myself know what the discussion was? In the bottom of the email that I received, it said that Jasmine, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Farrar, I should respect you, Commissioner Farrar, and Esther Mayheimer had already worked on wording. 7:56 a.m., at 9:02 a.m., an hour and four minutes, hour and six minutes, bam, here's a resolution, knowing that there are certain laws that should have been addressed when it comes to these monuments. You want to repurpose the Vance monument? Put a 65-foot cross in the center of downtown Asheville. Because the only way we're going to heal this land is to look to our almighty God and pray to Him that we change people's hearts. I don't look at that monument for my value. I look upward. I don't look to Washington, D.C. for fixing. I don't look to Raleigh, North Carolina. I look upward to my heavenly Father, and that's what we're going to have to do. But conversations should have been had way before we get to this point. I would hope, it is my hope, that one day, if this commission is ever flipped in another way, that you are not treated in the same manner that I've had in two resolutions, when I have asked, "This is not how we do business." It's not how. We've got to come together. And the profession I come from, coming together means we sit in a room, we have flip charts, we have sticky notes, and we plan. And we're going to plan and look at the whole totality of these circumstances and fix it. Because I don't, my value system is upward, and that's what, all I got to say.
Any other commissioners want to make any comments?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few. I think that, for me, let me turn this on. The concern that I have regarding the resolution is I would not disagree that it would be a start, a movement, that something would be being done. I don't know that it fixes the problem. And, you know, I want to make sure that as a commission, that however we might feel that this healing needs to come, that our comments don't create a separation between us. You know, I still have, I still have concerns with schools that are graded a D and an F because of where they're located, because of who attends them. I still have real concerns personally for achievement gap and how different, how people are treated differently in this town because of the way they look or where they live. I, my heart breaks for the condition of people's hearts. I could listen to the voices in the positions that people have, and they believe it deeply, but you could hear the, you could hear the problem that we have in the voices. And to me, if you want to, if you want to sit down and you want to have a conversation and you want to look at, because I don't know for sure, but I doubt these are the only three in the county, not the only three in the county. Surely there's battles, surely there's signage throughout the county that refer to different parts of our history that we may not agree with or disagree with. I can tell you that where I was raised and the area that I came from, that as a young man, I heard things that I didn't like about my friends that were a different color. It shaped me and it changed my heart to where that I did not and would not and have not ever referred to anyone the way that I heard it in the past. So it changed my heart. Does my heart need to be changed more? Absolutely. Does my heart need to be broken more? Absolutely. And I'll say that, and I'm not going to defend anybody. I don't know, I don't know the history of Vance. It really, really doesn't matter. It's what it represents, and I get that people are concerned about that and hurt by that. But I think, I don't think that the way this is written, and I don't think this is the answer. And for that, I'm not going to be supporting it. However, before this ever come up, I can tell you that I, that I was broken with what happened. And this doesn't have anything to do with me. I'm just going to tell you the fact. That I went and I sat down with my friends of color and pastors and had prayer and had meaningful conversations, and we used the word fluff. We didn't want to have the fluff associated with this, which is where we all have this conversation. We all talk about it, and we all sign something, we all go to the house, and everybody feels good. Okay? That's fine. And I'm not saying that those that would support this are just doing that in a flippant manner. I don't, I am not saying that at all. I totally respect, you know, where they're coming from. But I just, I want to say that what we need is a change of heart in this country. What I need is a change of heart. What our county needs is a change of heart. I personally believe it comes in a, in a relationship, a very personal and close relationship with an almighty God that, and you rely upon that for your decision-making. And if you do that, then you have a heart and eyes that allow you to see things differently. I'm not going to refer to what's happened in the past regarding the monument. I heard somebody say something about, you know, hey, maybe the monument ought to be at Vance's birthplace. I don't know. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not opposed to having conversations down the road about, about different things. But we're going to have to go deeper than this. We're going to have to, we're going to have to bring the community to the table to make sure that we have some change. I'll go back to the, what we're, the budget included, the, the child, the, my mind just went blank, the early childhood. Yeah, the early childhood and how that reaches communities and how that's real. But I understand that people are broken over some of the symbols. But if you're, we're going to look at things like this, we're going to have to look at it in the totality of the county, so. But, and honestly, I'll say this with, I say this with the love of my heart towards all the commissioners up here when I try to make my statement, you know, what I'm, what I'm saying tonight, so. I'll leave it at that, I think.
You want to make any comments?
Mr. Whiteside, it'd be hard for anyone to understand what you've been through and everyone. You know, in 60 years, I'm 61 years old, and, you know, I didn't understand until I had a real good friend of mine that explained it to me. Become business partners, and you know who I'm talking about, and I don't like to mention no names. And we was somewhere, and the N-word come up, and I felt like I was one inch tall because it was a friend of mine. And he looked at me and he, I said, "I'm sorry that he said that. We'll get out of here." He said, "No, that man's 87 years old." At that time, I was 40 years old, 20-something years ago. And he said, "That is what that generation of people know you as." He said, "If it'd been a 30-year-old, I would have knocked him out." So I think we are making progress. I just really don't think that removing the monument or the name is a fix. I think it is a crutch. Because what do we do next? You know, change the name of Asheville or Woodford, you know, we go back. I love history, and I love math. Them was my two best. And all these emails and call-ins today, you know, they were split both ways. You know, yes, there was more to take it down, but, you know, that was because of what was publicized. Well, you know, hey, let's everyone get together. We know how people post and paste on here. But hatred is what we need to be working on. Putting that cross up there and having, you know, thousands of people, as in Mr. Penland said, of putting a 50-foot cross up there and us having some of the meetings or protest, that could help us more than anything. Half of these people, or probably more than that, that wrote in here really don't even know about that monument. What it really, you know, we have people that read the headlines. And I've always said, that is what I dislike about the media the most, is they can make a headline and you don't even have to read the story and make your assumption of what they're saying. So I know I'm talking all around here about all this stuff. I wish that we would not let seven city council and seven county commissioners decide what we do of sending a resolution. Let's put this on the 2020 ballot in November and let the people, you know, voice their opinion. We heard a lot. We could have heard a lot more tonight. But until, you've had to walk in your shoes, Al. And I'll tell you, you're a good man, and you have done very well. And you've raised your kids and your grandkids, and I'm raising my kids and grandkids. Me and you have done the right thing. What we need to do is get these other people with hatred to really realize what this is all about because we're here for a very short time. And we won't have to put up with this much longer if this hatred does not. You know, I get emails about our governor of wishing some of the worst things on him, wishing on our president. But now with what's happened in the last three weeks of the people of sending me emails wishing because I don't agree with them that I would get COVID-19 or I need to go somewhere in Texas and eat lunch somewhere. And it took me a minute to realize what they were saying. And all that meant was, go out to Texas, eat here, go out, and you'll be assassinated. When you start threatening people, that's the problems we got. So that's why, you know, I'm not going to vote to take this monument down. I don't think it is my duty as one person out of these seven to be able to do something that's been in here until we look at everything, so. I appreciate the time. I've never had this many emails, and I don't think any of us have in four years that I've been here, that it's blown up, and all the emails that I've been getting while we've been sitting here. And you know what? It's both ways. But what I want to say more than anything else is these people that's been emailing me in the last 30 minutes or really the last couple of days, I pray for you, the hatred that you have in your heart right there. We can fix this, but not with hatred.
All right. I'd like to make a, I think everyone's spoken but me. I'll just make a couple of comments and then we'll vote. One, one comment I want to make is just Commissioner Belcher asked, you know, are there more Confederate symbols or monuments or things like that elsewhere in the county? Probably are. Part of, part of what makes this conversation different, you know, if someone has private property and they want to express their personal perspective, that's their right, you know? What people do on their own personal, private property is not what we're debating here. These are Confederate monuments that are on city and county-owned land. So, so that's, you know, we're not, we're not telling people they can't, they can't share their views in their own way, in their own space. But the discussion is about what we're going to elevate on our public property in the heart of our city. You know, I love history too. I've stopped, since then, ever since I was a little kid, I've just always loved reading about history. I studied in college. I think it's fascinating. And I wish we did more, you know, I wish we all, our society, put more emphasis on thinking about the past and telling the stories of the past. I certainly don't, don't want us to do less of that. I think we should do more of it. I don't think everyone who fought for the Confederacy was, was an evil person by any means. Most people who fought on both sides were just poor farmers. But that doesn't change the fact that the Confederacy was primarily, was a government that was primarily formed to preserve and expand the institution of slavery. And Governor Vance was a complicated figure. He did some good things in his, in his life, for sure. But it doesn't change the fact that he led the fight to preserve and defend slavery even after the war. He defended the institution of slavery to the end of his life. So when I think about the heart of our city and our public square and what should be there, it should not be a monument commemorating that figure, is my belief. The people who in their times made the decisions to put these Confederate monuments in place, they did it for a reason. And I think we're discussing this, and I hope we make this change into, to remove or change some of these monuments, and we're going to do it for reasons that make sense in our time. You know, what's happened in our country the last several weeks has been, I don't think, none of us have ever seen anything like it.
Breaks my heart.
And, you know, history doesn't change all at the same speed. There, there are times when we as a country and we as a society can make real progress. And I think we are in one of those moments right now. And it's going to be hard work. I think these are the hardest issues we have to face as a people. And, and it is going to take us coming together. I, I can tell we're not all going to agree on this, but I, I, I want us to, to find ways to, to come together. And while this individual decision might be something that we come down in different places on, I believe that making these decisions to do this is part of the process that in the longer run, I hope, does lead us towards greater unity as a community. So thank you for the opportunity to share my comments as well. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, it passes for three. All right, commissioners, we are through new business, and we don't have any board appointments to consider today. So we come to our remaining public comment. We will listen to the written emails that we received on other topics, other than the budget, other than monuments. Are there any voicemails on other public comments, Mr. Joyner? Okay. Okay, we just have the emails. Who's going to read this? I don't think I have a copy. Okay, Jasmine, if you, if you wouldn't mind reading them, that'd be great.
It's just these two. Is that correct, Mr. Joyner? Okay, great, thank you. This is from Pearl Foster. Hi, I am an Asheville native, a downtown resident, and a small business owner. In solidarity with Black leaders of Asheville, I am emailing you today to demand defunding of Buncombe County Sheriff's Office budget by at minimum 50%. Those tens of millions of dollars can do a lot of good in our community instead of perpetuating abuse against our citizens. Please stop this madness. Stop doing everything for hoteliers, breweries, and tourists over our own people. We've seen enough. If you will not help, we, the people, you must resign, just as Esther Manheimer and David Zach must resign. P.S., here's some great reading material for lifelong activists, by lifelong activists about our nation's future without abusive police. HTTPS, www.8toabolition.com. The next message comes from Ryan Imhoff in West Asheville. I vote for defunding the Asheville Police Department and defunding the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office. Do not add any more to their budget and also cut their current budgets in half to be used in our, in other community-led response services. Policing is a dangerous, classist, racist, fear, and violence-based form of responding to crises. The Asheville community calls for a more non-reactionary and inclusive form of social justice. We are willing to do the work so that none of the citizens have to live in terror. Stop wasting our money on the same failing system that perpetuates violence and poverty. Stop failing us as our representatives. That concludes public comment. I did just have a quick question. I'd gotten a number of questions from community members about whether all the public comments will be published that we received, if there's a way.
The plan would be to post them, but the, right now, we have not transcribed the voicemails, right? So the voicemails, we need to transcribe them to English and actually type those up. So that's going to take a while because there are so many of them. But yes, the intent would be to have those transcribed again.
Okay, thank you. I just, thank you. A lot of people had asked me about that. And thank you, Mr. Joyner. That's a big task.
Yeah, I would delegate some of that, Mr. Joyner, if I was you, for sure. That's a lot of work. Absolutely. That's great.
All right, thank you, Jasmine. All right, just a couple of announcements. We're going to have a, we're going to have a county commission meeting next week. We voted on the budget.
What are we doing?
It doesn't have to be on Tuesday. We're going to get an update on COVID-19 and have a follow-up discussion on some of the conversations we had this evening. And we may or may not take action, you know, but that'll be, that'll be the, we know we'll talk about that. If there are other things that the manager needs to, is there anything else that's on your radar screen? Or at this point, is that the one item that's expected to be on the agenda?
Yes, there's a couple of things on the radar. There's, we're required to give a child fatality report to the board, and we have not done that in several years, but we have done a child fatality report. So if we're having a meeting, we'll have to get that done before the fiscal year ends. We'll add that to the budget. The other conversation was some sort of recognition for staff that has worked through COVID. So we'll, we'll work through what that looks like. Our legal tells me I have some, some issues I need to work through before I can bring that forward. So that'd be the other option. I think there was a fourth option. Do you recall? Yes, and this year, we actually applied to NACO, which is National Association of Counties. We sent three applications in, and we won all three.
Oh, wow.
So we were working on that presentation too. So if we're in a meeting next week, we can actually have that for you as well.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a need for a closed session? Okay, great. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.